Okay.
Because if I just renew that contract, I know our cost is going up and I want to be aware of it. Can we review that cost from the society?
Okay.
It has to be based on our guards, our causes.
Yeah.
We've had a salary study since then. We need it last year, but we have to do it later. My knowledge is this will increase that cost.
Yeah.
It's more than seventy-five percent.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we just take that one?
To discuss, I'd ask questions and then I can review it.
What? Because I think we gotta do that one, we're gonna have to do the same thing with the C D O.
So will he let me know like what's his own costs and I know when?
He got six for him.
What?
He got six for him.
Right.
I might give him something.
Right.
But I'm not.
When I'm choosing our anything.
I'm not gonna.
Wait, do we do?
The only cost is standing because it was made in a way that very, what they were paying us more than covered the correct.
I got you, yeah.
I didn't need to go.
We're just too small.
Right.
Can't see, we got lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
And I'm good with the results.
Well. Why don't you, why don't we just pull it off?
Most people aren't.
You're right. Arm this for some of the largest areas. No way that that probably happens. When you add the cost of.
Got an extra if you need it.
Healthcare.
Yeah, but it's kinda weird, you gotta twist, sometimes it gets funny acting, but just play with it.
I try to reuse the same one over and over and the only thing that we're supposed to change is.
Thank you.
A lot of times, then I'll send it to the engineers.
Gotta act like you're right.
This one in particular, A T V sent us this ridiculously long document, which included bid documents in the front and then all the specs. So I was like, no, it needs to be in this, here you go, update your part. And then I don't know.
What's going on on the?
Actually updated. Um, so if they change things, I don't, I don't always know that, but if you wanna send me.
Of course, they'll call me, I saw them at the plant.
Yeah. Right, so yeah. Right, right.
That's right.
No. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm wondering more and more, but yeah, if you can, if you can send it to me, I don't even. Put it somewhere.
He was a good choice.
Um, exactly what it's supposed to say, then I can always go back and just make sure that's, that's correct.
Well, I have, I have a question on one on, on Ebenezer Road, it could have been B three and the board could be doing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Roger, did you, did you hear the, Jamie did the indication last night?
So it should be.
Would you permit?
Sure.
I'd appreciate it.
Okay, it's already B two?
It's already B two.
I truly just copy and paste, so I noticed, um, yesterday, I was working on a different one and my, my agreement versus what they updated or something, I had to. I just that things had gotten smaller. They were there, they weren't the same numbers they were clear, so I think, I think they're taking.
This agenda, this agenda, the one that's in my folder.
Um, so yeah, I can, I can make sure that those are buttoned down.
It's not like, yeah, can you restart it real quick?
Hey buddy, if you're running.
It, it would have to go out to bid, so it won't be on the next agenda anyway. Um, but. This is one of those that's, it'll probably be. Um, cause it'll have to be.
Jamie, you doing alright, buddy?
How about you?
All so good.
Okay.
Mister Reggie, I missed you at the, uh, run across everybody else, I didn't, I didn't get to see you during the conference.
I saw you when you was in line to eat there. I spoke to you.
That's right, y'all, y'all went to the other side. I remember that now, yep, I remember that now.
Is the inmate agreement, because we need to escalate that because our cost of guard.
Five oh six, are we about ready?
I mean, hey Charlie.
Okay.
Now, if you send me the email, I will, but I don't save anything.
So you don't have the email for drop box?
I do not, I have three sets of minutes, but I do not have the agenda material. But that's typical for me.
Did you get all your information up on your computer?
Yeah.
So he put in here for, for a B two. And, I mean, it doesn't go anywhere. The only way you get there is that Zeller Road. Tim, were you guys ready over there as far as? Come out and come out.
Uh.
Videos and say on and on.
All right, you ready?
Before you cross the railroad track, where he's at. Which was a B two.
Probably want to go down south.
Can you shoot it to me now?
Ready?
Whenever I want to.
Yeah, we're good. I think that's actually.
It don't sound good.
Reduce that a little bit.
Are we better now?
I, yes, we're good.
Can y'all hear me out there, is this working pretty loud? We've got some technical issues over here working on now. You good, all right. We're gonna call to order the Effingham Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, this May third, two thousand twenty-two, and we are at five oh eight when we called it to order. Have roll call Commissioner Floyd.
Here.
Commissioner Burdette.
Here.
Commissioner Corvitz here, Commissioner Deloche.
Here.
Commissioner Loper.
Here.
And Commissioner Kiefer.
Here.
Everyone is in attendance tonight, with that, we'll all rise, please, for the implication given by Roger Burdette, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Heavenly Father, we just wanna thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, Lord, we pray for our troops, Lord, I pray you be with each and every one of them and keep them safe, I pray you be with the people of Ukraine, Lord. Lord, I pray you give us the wisdom to make sound judgment tonight on everything we're, we're gonna hear about and, and do something that would be glorifying to you in some way, Lord. We pray this all in Jesus' name, amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Comes to item four, which is our, I'm sorry, item five, which is our agenda tonight, I understand there's some corrections and amendments to our agenda, allow our clerk go over those with us?
What is that on?
Our agenda, we're gonna do some corrections and additions to the agenda. Before we take a motion.
Okay, yes, Mister Chairman.
Which one is that?
The agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and she's gonna go over the corrections to the agenda before we take a motion.
Um, yes, sir, your changes tonight are to remove under consent agenda, item number one, consideration to approve to allow the agreement with the city of Poole for the use of an inmate work detail to renew for an additional twelve-month period. The request is to remove that item. Additionally, under planning board presentments, number sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, related to Catalyst Investment Partners LLC for a variance, um, to reduce the required buffers on a property located on Godly Road. There is a variance request, the second reading, and a sketch plan for that item, which is to be withdrawn from the agenda. Those are your changes.
All right, are there any other corrections or amendments to this agenda?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the corrections as stated by our clerk?
Removed.
Second.
Motion by Mister Kiefer, second by Mister Loper, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, hearing none, we have our agenda. We have a minutes that have been presented to us for April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two work session and the regular meeting minutes of April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, uh, work session minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? To have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mister Burdette, second by Mister Floyd, to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, hearing none, it passes unanimously. As we wanna welcome our public, public tonight, uh, those who are here in attendance, uh, ask you, when you make comments, make them to the agenda items only, if you would, if you have an item you want on the agenda, you can contact our clerk or our county manager and we'll see about putting that on the agenda. The correspondence for these, uh, documents or the documents for this, uh, meeting tonight are located in the clerk's office and on the Board of Commissioners' website. I hope everyone's had a chance to review and prepare to respond at the appropriate time. And with that, we'll move to our consent agenda, uh, consent agenda, and there are six items now with the removal of item one, so we'll begin with item two, and I'll read the six items and, and then receive a motion. Item number two is consideration to approve the renewal of an intergovernmental agreement for school resource officers between Effingham County School District, Effingham County Board of Commission, and Effingham County Sheriff's Office for the fiscal year twenty-three. Item number three is consideration to approve the renewal of the intergovernmental agreement with the Georgia Department of Public Safety for antenna slash receiver space on the county tower located at the transfer site on Courthouse Road. Item number four, consideration to approve to allow the contract for inmate commissary services at Effingham County Prison with McDonald's Supply Company to renew for a one-year term from July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Item number five, consideration to approve the renewal of accounting accountability court agreement, mental health drug court. And item number six is consideration to approve to accept a grant award from the CRC Senior Center Mini Grant in the amount of six thousand dollars. And item number seven, under consent agreement, is consideration to approve acceptance of a grant award from Petco Love Animal Welfare Grant Program in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. So items two through seven, the consent agenda, to have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve as read, with the exception of, uh, number one, which we removed.
Second.
Motion by Mister Loper, second by Mister Kiefer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, hearing none, the consent agenda, items two through seven pass unanimously.
Mister Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself on this next.
Okay. All right, we're moving to old business, and we'll note that on item number one, Commissioner Loper has, uh, recused himself and he's stepping away from the, from the bench this evening. Item number one in the old business, the planning board recommends denying an application on the site truck maintenance LLC as agent for William Henry Webb for a conditional use located at eleven oh five Stillwell Road to allow for a diesel truck and semi-truck service business. Zone B two, map number four oh nine, parcel number forty-nine A, this is in the fourth district. This item was postponed from the April fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
So this parcel is currently zone B two, I can show you on the zoning map here, it's the one with the, the star on it, so it was rezoned B two in two thousand six with a condition to allow tractor and equipment sales and service only. Uh, and as you know, in that area, there's a, that lighter blue on the other side of Stillwell, there is a, uh, the, the feed grain store, there's, I mean, there's the grain export business on the north side of Stillwell, and then there's the store on the south side. So there is some activity there, certainly, as, as you drive through, uh, there's some truck traffic and there's, there's a medium intensity activity. Um, the applicant, Mister Flores, wishes to move his business from Port Wentworth and use the existing metal building on the site, and it's, I think, that blue building right there that you see in the top photograph. Um, and repair, do, do onsite maintenance, you, currently he's doing mobile maintenance, but he wishes to have a base of operation, so he just wants to set up his business here. So B two doesn't actually include anything for, for diesel repair, uh, the, the, it's not mentioned anywhere in our ordinance, and we didn't consider that to be a real deficiency because we can kind of interpret what permitted and conditional uses in B two. And we thought that rather than suggest upzoning to B three, that we could try to make it work in B two with just a conditional use. Conditional uses include commercial parking areas and automobile service, and while diesel truck repairs may be not quite the same as that, it's, it's close. If we'd moved up to B three, he, his choices would have been automotive paint and body shops. So as you see, it's just, you know, we're just trying to make the ordinance work for the applicant. The problem was, though, that it is a very inten, it's a more intensive use potentially with truck traffic. There's an existing dirt driveway that, that has not been improved yet, although there is a plan to improve it, and of course, Stillwell Road is not a designated truck route. So we were left really thinking, well, we can try to help you get through this process and get your public hearings, but we're not certain this is the best business for this location, so it really is a decision for the planning board, and they actually, based on some neighborhood opposition, voted to recommend denial. And, um, after that, we did meet with Mister Webb and talked about the potential driveway improvements that he would be willing to pay for, but he wanted to wait for the vote tonight. So we, you know, we've talked to him about that, there is a path forward if you were to choose to approve this. But as I said, we've, we advised the applicant to go for conditional use, just to keep the zoning B two, rather than a request to upzone, which could trigger more intensive uses if the part, if the land were to change hands, so we were trying to find that balance.
Okay.
And, um, we are still recommending denial, but obviously, you know, we have had talks with Mister Webb since then, and we do have a plan to go ahead with, um, driveway improvements if you approve it.
All right, we'll open a, uh, public hearing on this item. See if there's anyone tonight that would like to speak in favor of this request.
Could I ask a question there, Mister Chairman?
Yeah, you probably need to come down to the audience if you don't mind. Mister, uh, Mister Loper? I'd go down to the.
Yeah, if you've recused, uh, yeah.
You what?
If you've recused, you might want to just.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you show you're speaking as a constituent.
All right.
Versus a commissioner. So we'll note, because of voice to be on the tape, that Commissioner Loper is, is speaking as a constituent from the podium.
My question is, three months ago when he started this, did anybody tell him in zoning that if, he needs to change it to B three instead of B two? So he could have moved ahead on the, on the B three, I mean, this is three months, that he's been delayed on the count of this back and forth between B two and B three?
We, we haven't, we accepted, we met with Mister Flores and we, we accepted his application, he went to planning board on schedule, and a month ago, we were, it was the, the item was postponed from this board's agenda because you were absent that night and asked for it to be moved.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that.
So we haven't, he, if he'd go, if he'd chosen to rezone, he would have been on exactly the same timeline, so we haven't slowed him down, we've met with Mister Webb, in fact, he came in today and was supposed to be here tonight, uh, to, to speak in favor of this. So I, I, we, we've done our best to help him, even though we were uncertain as to the appropriateness of it.
Okay, what does he, what, you tell me what he needs to do for us to pass it.
Well, right now, what we've got is a good question for a conditional use, and that's what we gotta address. So we, they may wanna pass it as a conditional use, but that's what we got to address is the agenda item.
Yeah, I understand that, okay.
So on the public hearing, let's just kinda move forward that and see where that goes, and then if that fails, then we can come back and ask that question for the constituent, when they respond, how they can move forward.
So as a constituent, you support, you're in the board, right?
Right. Um, so is anyone else speaking in favor of this conditional use tonight, that's what we're addressing, conditional use? Is the applicant here?
Mister Webb was in today and he did indicate he would be here tonight, we told, and I told him to be here at five, cause it's old business, so he may have been delayed, um, you, you, you might wanna delay it if you consider that.
All right, well, I have no problem if, uh, if, it's point of order, can I just go and ask if we delay this and move it to, at the end of our?
Well, we have an open public hearing, do we need to?
Doing, doing public hearings, we'll just do the first item, all right? I'm gonna give him an opportunity to speak, so we'll wait till he gets here, and we'll go ahead and move from this item and wait to the, to public hearings. Agreeable? Is that sufficient information?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and I think that's gonna cover item number two and. So we still have, we still have one old business item, item number three, so you can come on back to the podium, to the, uh, round table. So just let the record show, we're gonna, we're gonna address this during public hearings, since the applicant wasn't here to give him a chance to speak to it. All right, item number three in the old business, uh, consideration to approve the creation of a pavement, pavement management program and contract with the First Step Pavement Management to conduct a, an assessment of all the county roads in the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners, this is Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager. Uh, we tabled this last time, uh, at the request of the commission so that I could contact some of the, uh, other users of the program. And I was able to get responses, and you'll have to, I apologize, it's gonna take me a second, uh, my iPad crashed on me here for a second. But I sent, I got re, six references, uh, five were in Georgia, one was in Alabama, and, uh, of those five, excuse me, of those six, two of them responded. And without telling you who the two names are, cause I gotta try to find that here real quick, uh, they were both favorable responses. Uh, they, they, I asked them a series of questions about whether or not they found the, uh, the, the process useful in determining their needs, and they said yes. If I, I asked them if they found it useful in finding the most cost-effective method to, uh, fix more miles of road with the same money, they said yes. Um, I asked them which other alternative pavements they were employing, what they were currently doing and what they had been doing, and they were both very similar to us. One of them was, uh, Brunswick, uh, I do remember that, and they were traditional, what us engineers called mill and fill, they, it was either asphalt hot mix overlay, or it was milled down and replaced with hot mix asphalt. And they had, that's what they had traditionally been doing, which is what we do, and they had employed the same things that we're talking about doing, the scrub seal, which was that, that sealant on the pavement, and then the micro-surfacing, which was that thin, uh, emulsified, uh, layer that goes down. You saw the pictures of it, it kinda goes down with the squeegee and it's brown, and when it cures out, it blackens up. And they were both real happy, they haven't had any citizen complaints about those, they said the processes went, went real well, and, um, their public education outreach that they did prior to the work to kinda explain, this doesn't look like hot mix. They said they did, both of them did that, and they had good results, and people were very receptive of what they saw afterwards. So I didn't get any negative comments, and, and they, they said that, again, just reiterate, they found it a very efficient way to, uh, maximize their dollar and get more lane miles as, as the presentation we had last time resulted in, so. Uh, staff recommendation is, I didn't read that staff report, but it's the same as last time, and, and the staff was recommending that we, uh, adopt this as a pavement program and, uh, and, and hire the First Step Pavement Management Team, which is made up of, um, Arkansas's Technology Transfer Program at the University of Arkansas, Argonne, and, um, um. And I apologize, the, the other company data, something. Be happy to answer any questions.
Did they offer any, uh, letters of recommendation to you guys when they were proposing this, usually they'll come with letters of recommendation from?
No, we did not request that when we were asking for the proposal initially, so they gave me those references at, at your request from the last meeting, and, and I responded by email back and forth of those, I never, I didn't get a letter on letterhead, I just got their emails.
So the correspondence with the, uh, other cities or governments, was through email?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I contacted them all by email and got two responses. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, I might just suggest in the future that we do a old-school phone call follow-up besides email?
Hmm.
Cause I know a lot of folks, they, they get so busy, they say, somebody's looking for information, I don't have time, but, you know, just make that call to their public works or their managers or whatever, and.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I did try to reach out to them, but I didn't send them letters, I did email responses. I, I tried to contact them, I sent them an email, they responded by email.
Phone call as well?
Yes, sir, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I was just saying, I did not send formal letters.
I can't answer when it's just surveys and information.
Right.
You know, okay, all right, any questions regarding this item?
The, um, this, this doesn't tie us to any specific method on improvement, right, we still have, this is just the assessment side, correct?
Yes, sir, this is just the assessment. Now, what the assessment will do is it will recommend different types of treatments. As part of this process, we'll sit down with the consultant, and we'll talk about the different treatments, more than what you saw in the presentation, and we'll decide which ones we wanna try and which ones we don't wanna try, and then we'll add those to the software, and then we'll, as we're running alternatives, it will, it will go from that, pick from that menu of alternatives. If we don't like, uh, the fog seal, which is where it's, it's literally a fog seal, if we don't like that fog seal, for example, I'm just using it as one of the treatments, then they'll take it out, and so the software, when it's running, alternatives will not recommend that treatment.
That's right, but then it will go to bid, I guess, or?
Yes, once it goes to bid, we're, we're set, yeah, cause we would specify which ones we wanted.
And this, um, in the fifty-seven thousand, I mean, that would include the different scenarios, I mean, that they would suggest to us.
Yes, sir, the largest chunk is obviously the man-hours to drive all the roads, but it does include the data analysis, so it's not just, here's all your roads, you know, good luck, it's actually taking the software and running the analysis and making the recommendations from that.
spreadsheet they showed us on the far right is gonna have a, a identification of the type of rec, type of improvement they would do, you know, the different processes.
Yeah.
Not we had to do it, but they were gonna say, I'll do one, two, three, and it's supposed to tell us how long it would extend the life?
Yes, sir, it does.
Based on the usage.
And the beauty of that being an Excel spreadsheet, he showed you one example, but it's just a simple copy paste, and you can create worksheets within that workbook of the Excel as long as you want, you can make one, two, three, four, ten alternatives, and, and then just sit there and bounce back and forth and compare them.
That was the biggest thing I, I saw that, however, they confirmed with you that it was a tool that you'd be able to use in your department.
Yes, sir.
To continue reviewing this with us and.
Yes.
Picking those lamig roads and splotch roads down the future.
And I already have the tool, I mean, they give you the tool, uh, there, there's, the service is what you're paying for, so I already have the tool on the, uh, the, the fifty miles or so that we ran in our, during that pilot, and I've been playing with it, you know, just playing around with it, but again, it's just a small sampling of all of our roads. But, you know, I've already seen how it works, and, and that's exactly what it does, you just, you just, I call it a bunch, it's a dashboard of knobs and switches and, and slides, you just change the variables and it kicks out different results.
Any other questions, discussion, do you have a motion?
I like it, I don't think we could replicate that ourselves for what they charge.
No, I just, it's good to get some, I think we just wanna hear that others have used it and said, yeah, it works.
Yes.
Well, before we did it, so do I have a motion to approve alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mister Burdette, second by Mister Floyd, to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, hearing none, it passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Move to new business, item number one is consideration to approve an on-call service task proposal for spatial engineering to extract utility features from the scanned as-built records.
Hello, Commissioners, um, my name's Pamela Melzer, I'm the GIS coordinator, and today's item is, um, for the scan, or the, um, data extraction from the scanning that's been completed for the first phase. Um, Effingham County began scanning its records in two thousand twenty-one through a contract through a, uh, spatial engineering. As a result, the first round of record scanning, the county was able to identify a hundred and forty-two as-built records, of those a hundred and forty-two, um, ninety records have been identified for utility data extraction. And the utility data extraction will involve creating a GIS database or data set, um, for the following utilities, water, sewer, reuse, stormwater, and easement. The projects will increase the completeness of the county's mapped utility infrastructure. And it'll be used in the creation of the Effingham County Stormwater Master Plan and Water Sewer Master Plan. And staff recommends, uh, approval. Any questions?
Any questions or discussion from the board? All right, there's a recommendation of alternative one, do you have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Deloche to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number two, consideration to approve an on-call service, uh, task proposal for spatial engineering to scan and catalog Effingham County's hard copy drawings, uh, drawing record library.
Uh, Pamela Melzer, GIS Coordinator again, um, this, uh, agenda item is going to be for phase two of the scanning. Will be a additional twelve thousand sheets that will run through the system and then eventually also do the digital data extraction on. The, um, process we have scheduled for seven months. And originally, the first round of it, uh, we scanned six hundred and sixty sets of, um, drawings. And that resulted in twelve thousand sixty-eight sheets, um, so we're hoping to do the same with this as well.
Any questions or discussion from the board?
How far there was to take us down the road to being complete?
Um, there's a lot of file cabinets with drawers in there that we have to ground in. I'm hoping that this will get the majority of what's in the archives over there. Um, you never really know until you start rooting around and looking through everything that's in there, but, um, I, I, I would hope it, I would hope this is close to the last round of it.
Thank you.
That's the hope.
Yeah, it's getting expensive, I know we need it, we need the database.
Yeah, definitely.
We need the layers.
You have it, you have it.
And the file cabinets, I think, have a lot of the older data that we never would have had any digital data for, too.
Okay. All right, any other question, discussion? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number three under new business, consideration to approve to merge the wastewater treatment plant fund into the Water and Sewer Operating Fund.
Good afternoon, I'm Mark Barnes, Finance Director. Um, staff is requesting, requesting approval to merge the wastewater treatment plant fund and into the existing Water and Sewer Operating Fund beginning July one, twenty-twenty-two, and to transfer all wastewater treatment plant account and fund balances as of the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, into the Water and Sewer Operating Fund. Uh, for the fiscal year that begins on July one, twenty-twenty-two, there will be a single Water and Sewer Operating Fund with two budgetary departments, the Water and Sewer Department and the Wastewater Treatment Plant Department. Uh, this is an item that's been mentioned, I think, more than once in the past year or so. And combining these two would provide kind of a better picture in our financial statements of how the whole water system is doing. Because, um, the, the wastewater treatment plant and all the water and sewer lines and list stations, you know, are all part of the same water system. And, uh, combining them into one just gives you one spot in the financial statements to see how they're doing. And, uh, we did on this item speak with bond counsel about it in reference to the twenty-seventeen revenue bond. And they said they didn't anticipate that being any issue with merging these two funds together.
Yeah, yeah, and I mentioned I'd like to see that on our next financial audit and so forth, but I would like two P and Ls that are combined into one fund.
Right.
I mean, I think we still need to see the sewer and the water because they both have their operating costs and they both have their separate revenue streams. But under one fund, is that what we're gonna have here?
Yeah, that's kind of the, yeah, the plan, like, right now, they're still gonna be budgeted as two separate departments. But I'd have to speak with our auditors in terms of how they're gonna be presented in the next financial statement. Because usually on the proprietary funds, the enterprise funds, they just show just one fund level statement.
I'm okay with the proprietary fund and the countywide financials and so forth, or the budget. What I'm looking for is that, as we as a Commissioner, as we're setting rates.
Right.
We can look at, this is our water revenues and our water operating cost, including depreciation, all the capital costs. This is our sewer and this is what we're doing as a, as one fund that you're asking for. But we're gonna need to see the revenues and expenditures so we can set rates accordingly.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and those accounts will still be separated out like that.
Yeah.
So that we can run it that way.
I think this is gonna be much better information.
Separate the accounts, but you know, just combine the names is all you're doing.
Correct.
You think that'll help everything?
It'll make it look a bit more realistic, because right now, if you look at the Water and Sewer Fund, they had an operating profit of like four hundred thousand for the year. But the treatment plant had an operating loss of about one point one million, I think the number was. So when we combine that, we see what the water system as a whole is doing. Rather than thinking that water and sewers, you know, right now, it gives a little bit of a misleading picture.
Still, it'll be two separate, you just have to compare them.
Right, right now, yes, yeah, you'd have to add the two of them together to kind of see what the whole system is doing. Whereas going forward, and in the documents, there are kind of put together a mock-up of what it would look like. And it's just adding those two together. And so that one column that's right here on the third column is all that would be in future financial statements.
Is that the countywide statement you're looking at?
This is the, uh, this is the numbers from the, uh, from the page twenty-four, I think it was, in the audit financial report, but it's the enterprise funds.
Gotcha.
And it's the, uh, the balance sheet and the income statement are the two things in here.
I, I, I guess, yeah, and what, what he's saying, by combining the wastewater plant, which is a vital part of our sewer system, that cost was not in our Water and Sewer Fund. I've always wanted that cost in there so we can see what our real net gain or loss is from that operation. But what I'm asking to do in addition to that total, there should be a financial statement that shows two P and Ls that crunch into that.
Right.
I don't care if the balance sheet's separated.
Okay.
But, but that P and Ls, because that helps us determine, all right, this is our cost of our sewer system, which is a separate system. And it has all the costs now, the wastewater treatment facility as well as the sewer lines, which it didn't before. Right? And so that'll all be under one cost and the water lines and net wells and surface water be under one cost. And we can see what we are doing in each P and L.
Right, it, it was pretty close to that, it was actually, and what made it unusual compared to a lot of counties was that the water and sewer lines were already in the Water and Sewer Operating. And it was just the treatment plant that was off by itself in the WWTP fund, yeah. Which is kind of strange, because a lot of counties will separate water lines and sewer lines and have the treatment plant in there with that, so.
So we don't belabor, I think it's good to be in one fund to consolidate that cause. But I still want to look at what you're looking at for how you're presenting to the board in that one fund, because a lot of it in it.
Right.
And, and what we can do too, obviously this will, uh, will show up in the next budget, um, when we present it. Uh, and so if it's not in the way that you want, we can, we can, uh, we can switch it, uh, during that process as well.
Very good, but this motion is, uh, for alternative one to combine it into one fund.
Yes, sir.
Any questions about that?
I like it.
All right, motion for alternative one?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper to, for alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. So down to item number four, it's a resolution, consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh twenty-three to amend the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Okay, this is, uh, Mark Barnes again, the Finance Director. Uh, staff is requesting approval to an amendment to the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Uh, this is kind of a housekeeping amendment for the large G dot payment that we made at the beginning of the fiscal year. And now that we have the audit fund balance, so we went ahead and constructed this amendment. Staff is recommending alternative one, approve the resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty-two budget.
Pretty straightforward, do you have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Burdette to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number five, consideration to approve purchase order twenty-two dash seventeen dash zero zero one with, uh, SC Datacom for the new camera system for the Effingham County Sheriff's Office and Jail.
Good evening, Allison Bruton, purchasing agent. Um, staff requested po, rep, bleh, requested proposals.
I'm tired of feeling like that, too, by the way.
I haven't had enough coffee today. Um, to replace the camera system at the Sheriff's Office and the jail. Um, sixteen different vendors did attend the pre-bid, or the pre-proposal conference we had. Um, submittals were received from six vendors and the breakdown is on your staff report. There was no easy way to put together a full tabulation like I normally do because all of the proposals were so different. Uh, but they were reviewed by staff and the Sheriff's Office has recommended award to SC Datacom, which is alternative one.
Where's the funding for this?
It's a good question.
What was the question, I didn't hear it.
Where's the funding for it? Is it the current budget or is it sploshed or are we funding this?
So the camera system?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is coming from the new sploshed. Um, that's, uh, so the payouts will be, you know, effective.
After July one.
Uh, after July one.
Okay.
And this was one of the, uh, countywide projects.
Very good, I just didn't see the funding on here, we can't approve an expenditure without knowing how to fund it.
I apologize. I left it blank with all intentions of asking that and.
No problem. All right, we know how we're gonna fund it now, is any other questions? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Loper to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number six, consideration to approve an agreement with RICO, uh, for a new copier for the Tax Commissioner's Office.
Yes, sir, uh, so currently the Tax Commissioner's Office, their large printer is, or copier is just a black and white machine. Um, during their budget meetings, they did request a color copier for their office. Um, if we go ahead and approve this, the, uh, would require a new lease for a new machine. Um, and to keep that in line with the other leases, it would increase their payments to five hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents per month. Um, this has been discussed with her office as well as Finance and the County Manager, and staff recommends alternative one.
We did competitive review of this?
This is with the RICO contract, which we have, um, still ongoing with all of the other departments.
State contract. We, you all awarded a state contract to RICO to provide copiers at a specific price?
Check them out?
Yeah.
So it's, it is competitive, okay.
Yes, it's, yeah.
All right. Any other questions, discussion? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloche, second by, I mean, yeah, and second by Mr. Floyd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number seven, consideration to approve an agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for the collection and auction of the county's old fleet vehicles.
Yes, sir, so previously the board did approve a consignment agreement, um, but what I'm being told now is this is a new requirement by Enterprise um, for them to collect and auction our old fleet.
Any questions or discussion before I lose my voice? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Loper for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number eight, consideration to approve an updated agreement with CoStar for software used by the Tax Assessor's Office.
Yes, sir, so the Tax Assessor's Office currently uses CoStar to value buildings that have leases on them for an income approach appraising method. Um, this additional feature will allow them to do searches outside of the Savannah market, which is their current limit. Um, they currently pay seven hundred and twenty dollars a month, this additional feature will add a hundred and fifty dollars, bringing the total to eight seventy per month. Staff recommends alternative one.
Yeah, I'd love for a lot of additional information. Any questions? Motion for alternative one?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Burdette for alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number nine, consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh twenty-four for surplus items.
Yes, sir, this is a list of vehicles that are, um, that have received replacements through the enterprise program.
Any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Burdette to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number ten, consideration to approve change order number four with Atlas Technical Consultants related to Effingham Parkway intersection.
Good evening again, it's Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager. Uh, this is a change order to the design contract, design contract, or, excuse me, uh, change order number four under work order number six. And I was not here for the first five work orders, so. So, but this is Effingham Parkway, this is Atlas Technical Consultants, formerly Moreland Altabelli, the designers of the Effingham Parkway. This particular change order is to, uh, do a design of a roundabout at the Goshen Road intersection, something we've recently talked about. And also to give them the design contract to design a roundabout at the proposed Gateway Parkway with, uh, the Savannah Gateway Project, uh, the Bro OmniTrak project. Uh, they will do, the Atlas will do the design for both of these, they'll turn it over to DOT and DOT will issue change order to, to, uh, Balfour Beatty. And these will get built during construction of the Parkway. Uh, the funding is that OmniTraks or, um, the developer of Savannah Gateway will pay for the design and construction of the additional cost to build this intersection. Uh, I mean, there wasn't an intersection there before, so they're basically paying all the cost except the two mainline, uh, lanes. And then, um, as you're aware, on Goshen Road, the county is going to pay for the design and DOT has offered the construction cost for that intersection during, as part of the, the Effingham Project. Uh, the change order to Atlas for both of those is three ninety-eight, two seventy. And a portion of that, again, will be reimbursed by OmniTraks. That fee is not determined yet because, um, Atlas has to give them the design scope for that intersection. But three seventy-eight, excuse me, three ninety-eight, two seventy covers both intersections and will get reimbursed for a portion of that. I don't have that number yet.
Yeah, just saying, how, how does Atlas give us a number when they don't want the design scope is of the other one?
They give us a lump sum scope for both and I have not had, uh, been able to get them to break those two apart so that I can tell you what the design fee is for, um, the Gateway Parkway intersection.
Uh, I guess as a follow-up question then, when are we gonna get the information from OmniTraks or Bro or whoever? So that we can shore up, that they're not gonna come back with a change order and say, well, based on the specs of Bro, now we need another hundred thousand dollars for the design.
Not sure, I.
You got three ninety-eight for a design for two roundabouts.
Right.
But we don't know what the specs are on this roundabout here, what the scope or wherever they're looking for.
It's.
Do we need to know that? We kind of know what it is.
In concept, it's the same as what was built at Seventeen Blue Jay, it's a single lane roundabout with the two lanes for the, the a hundred and eighty degree movement. I think is the right way I'm saying it. It's a two-lane roundabout for a two-lane road, but it's built so that it, four lanes will feed into that.
We're gonna build it for a four-lane roundabout?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and I know I'm not explaining that right, but.
It should be fifty-fifty if it's pretty much the same roundabout.
I would think so.
You would think so, but I haven't got them to put that in writing yet, I'm, I'm still working on that.
If I reimburse, are we gonna get reimbursed?
We'll get, we'll get reimbursed from OmniTraks for the Gateway Parkway intersection.
Because they're slow.
As I put in, this third bullet point, those terms have not been defined yet because we haven't entered a written agreement with OmniTraks yet. And, and this is all contingent upon, you know, the notice to proceed with this with, um, Atlas is contingent upon us getting that agreement, um, from, uh, from OmniTraks. Uh, and also consider that, um, uh, we are portion of funding this. Uh, we still have, uh, PE design funds, uh, in the PFA for, uh, Effingham Parkway. Uh, so our, our funds will be coming out, out of that for the Goshen Road one. Uh, and then, uh, we will make the arrangements with, um, with OmniTraks prior to saying go with Atlas on this. But we have to get that figure first.
Could we table this, do we get those figures and kind of work some of that out? Or you think that's wise, or?
I, I think we gotta move forward with the design, I just want to make sure we're on top of how we're gonna get that share back from OmniTraks.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that too, it, two years roll down the line, we forget about getting our design money back and then it just kind of gets.
Well, eh, you know, as I was saying, we, we don't proceed with it until we have that agreement, um, with, with OmniTraks on reimbursement and the timing of that.
Control that at staff level.
Right.
Okay.
We have to slow it down.
Huh?
We don't want to slow it down.
No, no, we don't, I just want to make sure we're on top of getting that agreement with OmniTraks and how it's gonna be reimbursed. Because they haven't proven to be a, always a good neighbor.
We have multiple projects going on with them and their consultants who are our consultants on other projects, I'm contacting, I'm speaking with them weekly, if not daily. And so it's, it's right on the top of the list on every single conversation, so.
Well, you hear our concerns, that's the main thing.
Yes, sir, yeah.
So we can remind you of our concerns were, if there's a problem down the road.
Right.
All right, any other questions, discussion? So we don't slow it down to have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number eleven, consideration to approve a contract relate, related to the realignment of Courthouse Road, uh, at McCullough Road.
Thank you again, it's Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager. This is a, um, recommendation to hire a design consultant to do a realignment of Courthouse Road at. at its northern terminus with McCall Road near twenty-one in Springfield. Um, little background on this, if you, uh, look on the staff report, the T-Splas referendum recognized this as one of the projects that needed to be done. And, um, there's an exhibit with an orange road and a green road in your packet. It's a hand-drawn exhibit that we did here internally to, uh, differentiate between the two and we gave these to the consultants. Alternative one is the green one. That's the short one. That's the one that was recommended in the T-Splas referendum. Um, and it tie, it was to swing the road over and tie in with Dashar Point, uh, Road, uh, in, in concept. Uh, that was in the T-Splas referendum. When the transportation master plan was completed, they looked at that alternative and they came up with a second alternative, the orange line. And they found that from a traffic movement in the region standpoint, bringing that alignment all the way into the intersection with, uh, Laurel Street at twenty-one at the signal, just down the road from our office here, was the better alternative. Now that obviously comes with a, with a, a larger construction and design price tag and that was what was in the master plan. So what we have done is we've put out an RFP to solicit, uh, consultants from our IDC to give us a proposal to design, um, one of the other. They will have, do this in two stages. There'll be a conceptual design phase where they will analyze the pros and cons of both alternates one and two. They will bring that forward with a recommendation to us. We as a group, uh, as the client and owner, will make a decision on which alternate we will pursue. And then they'll start hard design, right away acquisition, utility relocation, et cetera. And this contract takes the consultant through the bidding phase and construction management phase. Uh, where, where they'll assist us with the hiring of a contractor and provide construction observation during construction. The, um, last point on this is that the design fees that were quoted to us far exceeded our budget as presented in the Splas referendum for design and construction. So the staff is recommending that we continue this project and move it forward and fund this project, uh, for design. And we will have to seek additional funding at some point in the future for construction, cause there are not a current, not currently enough funds for construction uh, in the T-Splas referendum.
Why does this yellow line or, I mean, in their third alternative, just stop it at McCall Road? You gotta go on, they gotta go on all the way to twenty-one.
That is the alternative two that was ca, that came out of the transportation master plan. They said that, that was the recommendation of the consultant that, to make it more effective of a change and to, uh, improve traffic flow at the existing McCall twenty-one intersection, that it was better to bring that courthouse traffic over to twenty-one and, and probably divert some of the McCall traffic off of tw, off of that and to follow that new alignment down Web Road, crossing railroad tracks and, and terminating at the traffic signal.
But, but that is an option, um, uh, that, that we could look at, which we, we say, well, um, we can bring it to Web Road, terminate it, uh, and then do a phase two of the project, uh, which then brings, uh, continues it from Web, Web Road to twenty-one at a future T-Splas or something to that effect. If that is where the board would prefer the intersection. My only concern with the, uh, Dashar Point was, you know, is it far enough away from the existing intersection to really solve the problem uh, that we have, uh, there? Um, so we looked at the alternative of Web, but to your point, yes, we can, uh, we can change that design. Uh, just do the overall design, then not do the, uh, and then when we choose construction to only, uh, to phase it out.
Yeah, because that, that, that's gonna almost triple the cost of construction, I would think.
Mm-hmm. And as part of the concept phase, uh, if that was the decision that was made that we, to phase alternate two, as, as Tim was explaining, uh, we could do that and, uh, these contracts are set up on a man-hour, uh, basis with a fee not to exceed. So we don't pay lump sum, so we'd only pay for the work that's done. So this proposal, uh, the dollar amount considering this proposal is for the entire alternate two, uh, worst-case scenario cost for design. But if we did half of that, um, you know, we're just paying a portion of that fee. This is a fee not to exceed. So I guess bottom line is our final cost with the consultant could be less than this if we went with a third alternate.
So in, in this design, what they're gonna be looking at, one is what's gonna be most efficient?
Yes, sir.
The green or the yellow? And then secondly, if the yellow's the most efficient, we don't have to build the whole thing. We could, it'd still be efficient to get it to McCall, give you more.
Correct, yeah, they'll look at all that, yes, sir.
More staging area?
Yeah.
Okay, and that'll be considered in that.
One last thing on the, on the, uh, recommendation. I'm giving you a, 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 a either-or recommendation. Staff has given you an either-or recommendation. As the, uh, the committee, the staff committee that reviewed these proposals, we basically had the determination and, and, and joint recommendation that Atlas Technical Consultants was the best work plan. With these proposals, we asked for a work plan. How are you gonna do it? Give us details on how you're gonna do the design. Tell us what your schedule and what your cost is. The committee felt that Atlas had the best work approach and their schedule was only a month longer than the, the low cost. Uh, and their fee was reckon, what there's, was po, excuse me, proposed at four ninety-six, one eighty. The lowest cost proposal was Alliance Consulting at four oh five. And they were basically second place because their, uh, scope of work lacked detail. And, uh, we just felt more comfortable with the experience that Atlas has had with GDOT. Uh, Alliance did not demonstrate that same, uh, understanding of GDOT processes. If we went with alternate two and tied into twenty-one directly, that would become a va, very valuable pe, piece of the puzzle. So the recommendation from staff is to go with Atlas at four ninety-six, one eighty, but there is an alternative two if you chose to go with, uh, the low-cost solution.
What are we voting on? Hussey Gay Bell? I mean, what are?
We're on item eleven, right?
Sorry.
Or am I, have I jumped the, have I ju, have I jumped?
Sorry.
The Gay Bell was going on.
I skipped a page.
Sorry.
Hussey Gay, six fifty-eight.
Mr. Mr. Deloach gave me a small heart attack for a second.
So Atlas Technical, you believe if we're gonna tie, if, if the twenty-one tie-in was what we chose to do, it would be advantageous to have them working with DOT since they've got experience with it?
Yes, sir. And the railroad, their proposed scope of, their proposed plan of attack to deal with Norfolk Southern Railroad and get that crossing upgraded was very detailed and, and that they had demonstrated a lot of experience doing that.
Well, I'll just tell you where I'm at. I cannot in good conscience vote for Atlas just with the relationship we've had on Effingham Parkway. So I'm, I'm definitely against doing any projects with Atlas. And that's just where I stand.
Are we gonna have to cross the railroad with this?
If we went with the orange line alternate two, it does cross the railroad, yes, sir. At the end of Web Road.
For what you're saying, or some of our sentiments too, for the difficulty, but also, um, that's gonna increase the design cost, I would think that if we, I don't know. I can't even believe we're gonna be able to get a crossing without giving up something else.
We have, no, there is one there. There isn't. It's just upgrading it.
Oh, upgrading, oh, I got you, okay. Cause we're staying on Web Road, I got you. Yeah, I've ridden on horses back, I don't know what you're talking about now. I apologize. I just wonder if that's adding a lot of cost to this, having that design, other than just solving the twenty-one McCall intersection? I don't know. See, we're adding a lot of cost in the design even.
Yeah, yes, sir. I mean, common sense says it, alternate two's gonna cost more. We, we know that going in. Uh, again, we're trying to, it, it, this is a very, it's a very difficult thing when you're comparing consulting services and alternates that you don't know the cost to until you actually do some design work. Uh, you know, these all, these consultants cannot tell us what it's gonna cost until they actually spend some time in design. So we go through a qualifications-based selection. First, we narrow that down. We ask for a, which we have done. We ask for a scope of plan, scope of work, which we have done. And we've told them that one, two, or more alternates will need to be considered in a conceptual phase. They will stop work and let us make a decision on which alternate we go forward with, one, two, three, three A, three B, whatever. And then they'll go forward with design. Worst-case scenario, they build exactly what we told them to, the most expensive option, and that's the fee that they've proposed. So we'll write a contract not to exceed that fee, but we will likely come in less than that.
I'm, I'm falling on this is that, um, I don't anticipate, at least me supporting going all the way down Web Road. You're gonna get a lot of resistance from a lot of folks. It's gonna be hard politically. Um, it's gonna be very cost. And that's probably what's driving the cost of Atlas. So if you wanna at least get a preliminary look at what that would look like, I would go with the lower bid. Uh, I'm with Commissioner Deloach on this. At least for the four hundred thousand, you can get a look, see and see what it would cost. Um, I don't think their expertise is gonna end up being very valuable, cause I don't know that we're gonna wanna do that anyway. But it wouldn't.
Okay.
It, at some level, get some ideas, so I'm gonna have to recommend alternative two from the chairman's perspective for that reason. Does that make sense to board members? But I'll entertain a motion for either one.
Economically, I mean, if, if they got a little bit better process, is it worth ninety thousand dollars of our constituents' money?
And if, if we're probably not even gonna do it anyway.
Yes, uh, um.
And the main issue is, is bringing that traffic in on McCall Road.
Yeah.
Earlier than it is now. And, uh, and since the traffic studies showed a yellow to, McCall, we ought to look at both of those. So I, I would recommend, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion for alternative two. If I get it, we'll go forward. If not, we'll go for alternative one. Have a motion for alternative two?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by, uh, Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper for alternative two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, alternative two is passed unanimously. We'll at least get some information on both. Okay, thank you for that. Item number twelve. Consideration to approve a contract amendment with Hussey Gay Bell for the Blue Jay Water Main Extension.
Good evening. One more time, it's Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager. Um, you saw this change order at the last meeting. Uh, it was a change order with Hussey Gay Bell to, uh, do some design changes. And right away, an easement acquisition for the Loop B Water Line. Um, you'll see the information in the packet. If you look to the second page in that, the amended change order, the different line items, lines one through five, those numbers are correct. However, simple mathematical error on the, uh, the number that really mattered, the total contract, the total change order amount, we, we did the math wrong. So the real number is a, is one eleven five hundred and that brings the total contract with Hussey Gay Bell after this amendment to two-ten, two-seventy. And we're just simply asking you to amend that change order and approve the additional change order of one eleven five hundred. Nothing else changed.
Checking you guys' math?
It went across a lot of desks. I think it still got missed, so my apologies, but.
Spreadsheets.
Any other questions or discussion? This is a vital design that we need to complete for sure, so. A motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Got a motion, uh, I'll take Mr. Loper's motion. Mr. Burdette, would that be your second? Mr. Burdette is a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that takes us to, uh, six o'clock hour and we are at six oh three, is it?
Do you wanna circle back to that other item that we postponed?
Uh, we're gonna do it on the planning board, I thought.
Oh, are we?
Yeah, I'll tell them, move it on the first item under planning.
Gotcha.
If, if you're here tonight for item number...
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, I believe.
Uh, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, those have been removed, uh, from the planning board hearings. And then, um, also under old business, item one and two, the applicant wasn't here, is under old business, is he here now? This is for, um, a truck maintenance LLC. Okay, not, not yet. Yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute break. They said they need a restroom break right here. So we'll, we'll have that on the public hearing first and then we'll do the rest of public hearings, okay? Five-minute break, the commissioners can be back pretty quickly, that'd be great. Five-minute break, the commissioners can be back pretty quickly, that'd be great. All right, can you hear me okay out there? My voice is a little soft tonight. I've been meeting and talking all day long, so if you, for any time I get too quiet, wave at me, I don't mind at all and I'll try to talk a little louder. I'm trying to save a little bit of voice. We're going to begin tonight's public hearings with some old business that we put off because we're waiting our applicant to be here. So I'm going to read the old business item and I'm going to let our zoner, zoning administration go ahead and repeat what she said and then we'll open the public hearing.
I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, and the record will show that Mr. Loper is recusing himself on item number one and two and stepping down from the commissioner's desk. All right, item number one, an old business, we're going to have a public hearing on. The planning board recommends denying an application by on-site truck maintenance LLC as agent for William Henry Webb for a conditional use located at 1105 Stillwell Road to allow for a diesel truck and semi truck service business. Zone B2, map number 409, parcel 49A in the fourth district. This was postponed from the April 5th meeting of 2022. Teresa, why don't you give a brief summary of what you shared earlier?
All right, this parcel is currently zone B2. It was rezoned to B2 back in 2006 and as you see there, it's, it's one of very few commercially zoned parcels on Stillwell Road. Stillwell Road is not a truck route. There is some fairly intensive use next door though. Next to this parcel, there's a grain kind of silo operation. And then to the south where that blue square is, there's a store and a retail and wholesale operation. So Mr. Flores wishes to move his, his diesel truck maintenance business from Port Wentworth to this location. It's zone B2, which doesn't currently include diesel engine repair, but does include commercial parking area and automobile services. Or, so we recommended that he pursue a conditional use rather than upzone to B3, which itself doesn't actually include diesel repair either. But we thought B2 would, it'd be better to stay at B2 and maybe get a conditional use. So that was the advice we gave him. We're not, we were not totally happy with the site plan that was submitted, although that has been improved. There, there was a new one and some additional proposals regarding the, the entrance, which is really the sticking point. It's currently, the lower right photo there, that's currently, oh, I'm sorry, wait, this one. The lower right photo there, that's the entrance, it's a dirt access from Stillwell Road and there is a lot of dirt on the road. So i-if left unchecked, this is, you know, really potentially damaging the road and certainly causing a lot of erosion there. So staff recommended denial. It went to planning board. There was some opposition from neighbors relating to complaints that maybe didn't relate to the business because it's not actually operating yet. So the planning board, for want of complete information, did recommend denial. But we have met with Mr. Webb, who's the owner of the property. And he had, you know, we have charted a path forward for entrance improvements. So if you were to approve this, we definitely have a plan to move forward and to have them improve the entrance so that it's not damaging any roadways. But this is the proposed plan. There's an existing building, which is the blue building there on the upper left photo. And the proposal is to use that existing building, park trucks maybe out back for a few days while they're being worked on. And then turn around trucks as quickly as possible. Mr. Flores estimated, I think he said eight to 10 trucks at a time and normal business hours. But the, the concern that staff had was that this is not a designated truck route and adding and encouraging additional trucks could turn this into a problem area. But at the very least, we could fix the driveway issue and get that improved, so.
All right, there may be some other concerns we need to talk about as well. But we'll have the public hearing and first hear from the applicant if you'd like to speak to your request for this conditional use.
Good evening, sir. Yes, glad I made it this time because last time, you know, we had to postpone it. But yeah, we're like she said, you know, we've been in business for so long and we know there is some problem improvements that needs to be done, especially on the roadside. We've been talking with Mr. Bill Webb and he say he will help us doing all that necessary, you know, repairs or improvements to that access road. But we, we're not a crowded business, you know, and we're going to have a place in a full truck. We're just normally trying to have like eight or 10 trucks, you know, per day. And sometimes, you know, they just going to take, you know, two, three days. But we're existing business from Port Wentworth and we've been in business for so long, so we really know how to handle it. We never have a problem complaining. We were in Grange Road, which is a high transit road in Port Wentworth. And we have good, you know, reviews for everybody who knows us on the city and everybody around the Port Wentworth and Savannah area. So we're just trying to bring those businesses here because it's, it's been tough to find a place, you know, where to actually continue with our business on that area. So we're just trying to ask him for an opportunity, you know, to bring that new business chance here and, you know, hope everything, you know, goes well.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Anyone else speaking tonight?
Mr. Chairman, if we could get his name.
Oh, could you give your name again?
Donnie Flores.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There may be some questions from the board in a minute.
Okay.
Listen to others tonight that may have come to speak to this item.
Okay.
Anyone else tonight speaking in favor of this request for conditional use? Anyone tonight that would like to speak in opposition to this request for conditional use? Okay, if you have a seat, we got someone that wants to speak. If you'll state your name for the record, that'd be great.
My name's Chris Webb. My father and I run Ige and Webb's on Springfield, which is in Stillwell, which is right down the road. My only concern would be that there's already an existing business, a trucking business there that has probably eight to 10 dump trucks plus already five or six semis plus dump trailer. So is that going to go away and then he's going to replace that? Or is that going to be an additional eight or 10 semis on top of the four or five there, plus the eight to 10 dump trucks? Because those trucks are already going in and out of that drive. And it, obviously, our business aggravated and we have semis in and out all day, but we have a different entrance, crush and run, not paved, obviously, but just more area. And I guess my dad's constantly grading and re-curbing the side to help prevent any kind of wear and tear on the road. So that would just be my concern about if you allowed that, is that going to be two additional semi businesses right there with twice the number of trucks?
Okay, very good. Might ask the gentleman, the applicant, can you ask, can you answer that question?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, we've been talking, you know, with Mr. Bill about it. And he say he's going to get a checkered run path, you know, for it, you know, for right now. But we're in the planning, you know, to get a, an asphalt access to the, to the road. Because that's a totally different business from a...
So it would be two businesses.
Yes, but I'm not really sure what's the other business because I know they're just parking there, but I'm just going to be focused on my, on my business.
So I think to answer your question, Mr. Webb, it would be an additional business is what he's asking for, conditional use.
I have nothing to do with Uncle Billy. So I'm, I'm, there's a, a trucking company there, Michelin Sons, that do a lot of hauling.
I'm sorry, you need to cut the microphone.
Sorry.
No, I was just asking because right now, Michelin Son is the trucking company. And, I mean, there's trucks in and out all day. Obviously, we have trucks in and out all day also. But I have nothing to do with Uncle Billy and what he's doing over there, so I don't know. I'm assuming it would be two because I don't think he's just going to tell them, hey, you've got to move to let Mr. Flores in. So that would just be additional trucks is my concern.
And that's what he just affirmed, it would be additional trucks.
Yeah.
Anyone else speaking in opposition tonight? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and we'll see what the board might have as far as questions or comments.
The agreement is to upgrade the driveway if this goes forward, correct? Can you tell how many trucks per day you think you're going to have?
Normally, in our operation days, we normally receive like six to eight work orders per day, sometimes less than that. And sometimes we can have up to 10, 12 trucks, you know, per day. And then we normally focus on just doing PM maintenance and quick repairs. So those trucks then get, go in and out, you know, same day. Sometimes they stay one or two days depending on the charges on parts. Because we have seen that recently happening. But that's pretty much, you know, what we have seen, you know, for the last few years.
Mr. Chairman, I definitely have a few concerns. Just personally, I just don't like the fact that it's B2 with the conditional use. I mean, this is, this is going to be heavy mechanic work. I mean, this, this is every bit of B3 all over it. But regardless, even if it was, the application would be three, that, that still doesn't really help my concerns out. I think earlier, the term was used, I think Teresa may have said this, but intense use, I do agree with that. I think this would definitely be an intense use in that area, especially as we could see on the previous slide up there. There, there are a lot of residential areas around this, a lot of residential property. Mr. Ige and Webb, as Chris said earlier, does run a business there. It is B2. But I think that business supports the area. It, it supports all the farming community, so I think it serves a purpose. It's been there for a long time and I've never known of any complaints. With the additional trucks that would come to the Tulane County Road, that, that's definitely a public safety concern of mine. So I, I guess with all that being said, I'm, I'm not in support of, of the request.
Okay, thank you.
I've got some of the same concerns, but also consistency. We've already been down this road with another one, Diesel Power Solutions. He had I1 in front of him and we still required him to go B3 with a conditional. And he hid his business behind his house, pretty much. So we required him to do a lot of stuff and then we're, if, to go with, there, there's just nothing for B2 here. And, and in addition to that, we're trying to push big trucks into I areas, you know, and that movement along. And what we're trying to do and clean up our area and keep it away from, from homes, it just doesn't fit with what we've been trying to do here lately. And our rezoning that we just did and adopting our new zoning code, it just, it just doesn't fit at all. Lastly, you know, truck route issue, it's an additional business, going to increase the, the volume. And there is no adjacent parcels that would support it. There is some things in the area, but, I mean, if you're going to do, you have to go down the, the road of an industrial. If you want, if we want to be consistent with what we're trying to do now, at a minimum, if we want to be consistent and fair to people, B3 with the conditional is what we did last time.
Any other comments from the, the board of questions?
I don't.
Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we deny the request.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burnett to deny the request. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, then it's denied unanimously. I think we're trying to move that type of heavy trucking type repair business into the B3 or industrial area. As we grow so fast, protect our agricultural areas and work and feel for it.
Okay.
Appreciate your application.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
So item number two becomes unnecessary. So we'll move to our public hearings and it will show that Mr. Loper has returned to the bench for our public planning board hearings. The first item under the planning board is the planning board recommends approving an application by D.A. Griffin to rezone 4.94 acres located at 384 Zipper Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the separation of a home site, map number 396, parcel number 56 in the second district.
Ms. Griffin's parcel is just under five acres. It is zoned AR1 and she wishes to split it. And in order to do so and have staff sign the survey, we need to rezone it to AR2. This is the proposed survey and she's splitting the parcel as shown there and there's an access easement included. She's already signed the private road statement. Staff are recommending approval.
Let me get my computer up to where we are here. I'm going to kind of try to fast track some of these R1s to R2 by seeing, is anyone speaking in opposition to this tonight, opening a public hearing? Anyone speaking in opposition to this zoning request from AR1 to AR2? Speaking in opposition?
Um, no, I'm Dee Griffin. I'm Dee Griffin.
Right, I'm trying to fast track. If there's no opposition, then there may not be any need for the, yeah, yeah. All right, seeing no opposition, now you're welcome to speak, but there seems to be no opposition to this tonight, okay? So I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burnett, second by Mr. Loper to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. My assumption is usually for the audience that R1, R2 is going to be pretty non-competitive. And if I can help you not have to stay here for a long time, then I'll try to fast track these as quickly, as much as possible. But I'll slow down if there is some opposition, obviously, and we'll hear from everyone tonight. Item number two under, under planning board is a second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by D.A. Griffin to rezone 4.94 acres located at 384 Zipper Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the separation of a home site, map number 396, parcel number 56 in the second district. Motion to approve second reading?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burnett, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing none, second reading passes unanimously until you're approved. Item number three, under public hearings, the planning board recommends approving an application by Stephen Reed as agent for Paul E. Bruner to rezone .8 acres located at 205 Pitt Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the combination with an adjacent parcel, 244, parcel number nine in the third district.
So this is very similar. So the parcel, you see where the star is there, that's AR1. It's, the proposal is to combine it with the darker green to the right, which is AR2. And of course, in order to combine them, they have to be the same zoning district. So that little section around the star is going to be subdivided and then recombined with the parcel to the right.
So it'll be bigger than an acre when it's all combined?
It'll be, yeah, it's, it's going to just make the parcel to the right, which is 24411, slightly larger and...
I got you.
It's, it's just taking this sort of rectangle here and switching it over to this parcel here.
All right.
It's moving one property line.
Very good. So anyone tonight speaking in opposition of rezoning this map and parcel from AR1 to AR2? Okay, whoever's applicable, you're welcome to speak, but you don't need to. Anyone that wants to speak to this item. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff and planning board recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second Mr. Loper to approve with staff and planning board recommendations. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Stephen Reed as agent for Paul E. Bruner to rezone .8 acres located at 205 Pitt Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for a combination with an adjacent parcel, map number 244, parcel number nine in the third district. Motion to approve second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second Mr. Loper to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll move to item number five, under planning board, public hearings. The planning board recommends approving an application by Hubert T. Greiner Jr. to rezone 3.21 acres located at 1360 17 South from AR2 to AR1 to allow for a combination with an adjacent map, number 296, parcel 49 in the 3rd District.
And this is very similar, so that parcel highlighted there, the proposal is to combine it with the larger parcel that surrounds it, outlined in red there. So the smaller AR2, combine it with the larger AR1 for tax purposes. And, and because they are different zoning districts, we can't sign the recombination plat. But if, once you rezone it, we can sign the recombination plat, we're recommending approval.
From AR2 to AR1 on this one, though?
Yes.
Not AR1 to AR2?
It's tricky, yeah.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone speaking in opposition to rezoning this from AR2 to AR1, this item? Okay, does anyone wanna speak for it? You don't need to, I don't hear any opposition. All right, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff and planning board recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deluch, second by Mr. Loper to approve staff and planning board recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. So we'll go to the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Herbert T. Greiner Jr. to rezone 3.21 acres located at 1360 Highway 17 from AR2 to AR1 to allow for the combination with an adjacent parcel, 296, map 296, parcel number 49 in the 3rd District. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deluch, second by Mr. Loper to approve second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number seven, under public hearings, the planning board recommends approving an application by James M. Carlson to rezone 3.87 acres located at 2077 Highway 119 North from AR1 to AR2 to allow for a five lot subdivision, map 387, parcel number one in the 3rd District.
So the parcel highlighted there, the proposal is to combine it with this one down here and then to split all of that into a total of five. So it'll go from two parcels to one parcel, then up to five parcels. So starting with two, ending with five, there's adding three parcels, which is why we are not, first of all, can't sign it. It's, it's technically not a minor subdivision anymore. It becomes a major subdivision, even though it's not what we'd normally see as a major subdivision. But the proposal is to add three home sites at the rear of the property for family members. The applicant has added an access easement and the private road statement. So we are recommending approval of this one. This is on Highway 119. And so if additional driveways were going to be requested, it wouldn't be through the county. It would be through DOT. And so that is something, there is a driveway on the site for the current home. And it, it is a question of whether the future family members will, will use this driveway or, or whether the access easement will be cleared for, for a driveway to the rear parcels. But in any event, DOT would be approving that. And as we've adopted their standards, essentially, they would have to meet our access management policy because we've adopted DOTs for state roads.
Okay. We're opening a public hearing, anyone speaking tonight in favor of this rezoning request? That would like to speak? Since it's a major subdivision, you might wanna speak to it, yeah.
So as you see, we currently, we obtain, and we actually live in Lot 2. We actually have cut an easement access on the left-hand side and gonna be working directly with the DOT to get that access. It would not be our private drive for those, the three residents that will be back there in the back on Lots 3, 4, and 5. Lot 2, that is individually done, that's the six acres. That would be a, a home site that eventually me and my wife would build and hopefully relocate from there. So it would be for our three children and we would, each of those lots will be, 3, 4, and 5 would be, or, excuse me, 2, 3, or 3, 4, and 5 will be actually home sites, a little over an acre.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking for tonight? Anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this rezoning request from AR1 to AR2?
Chris Webb, again, I live, I'm actually neighbors to James, I like James. My only concern would be, is if you rezone it and he eventually moves, what happens? Since it's, the land's already been rezoned, can you add three more lots? And is it, there's an existing mobile home behind James's home now and those three lots are going to be mobile homes? So nothing wrong with mobile homes, but does it become a trailer park? Is, would be my concern. And then if James decides to move from his current location and sell it, if I don't buy it and somebody else buys it, then are they gonna turn those three lots into six lots or turn it into nine lots and continuously adding more mobile homes to that subdivision, so to speak?
What's the number of lots you could have on this R2 property?
So the, the easement shown on the plat can only serve these three parcels. They're each at least one acre. And in order to get permits for mobile homes or a stick built, they'd have to be one buildable acre. And, and none of that perk testing has been done yet, so this is still theoretical. The remaining acreage, the six acres in the front, if that's what we're talking about, we're only proposing to rezone the, the top. If you wanted to step back, you could see it. The, the, these three parcels, this is the total of 3.87 acres. That's proposed for rezoning. The front six acres, you know, will contain a home site. It currently contains a home site and a mobile home. And that's currently, that's allowed under AR1. If there was a proposal in the future to subdivide this and add more home sites, it would need its own, they would need their own easement. They would need to go through DOT to get driveway access, and that's not a guarantee.
And they'd have to go through rezoning to be able to have more than one house on that piece of property.
So I might miss, might have misunderstood. So where the three lots are going, that's only being rezoned. The 6.2 acres is not being rezoned.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, all right, I was.
Well, I've never seen anything like this so far come up for rezoning in District 3 or any of the other districts. Since this is considered a major subdivision, which most of our major, all of our major subdivisions have a paved road that goes into it. I mean, is there a paved road or is there a variance that's gonna be requested?
This is one of those gray areas. We have minor subdivisions up to three, so, and then anything above that is a major, even if it's Park West versus 5, that's all considered major. And so in the past couple of years, we have charted a path where we'll take it on a case-by-case basis for subdivisions of maybe five lots. We've had a few come through and we've treated them really the same way. We've, you know, changed the signature block, we've made it, brought it before you all as a final plat. Sometimes they require rezoning, sometimes they don't. This is similar to something that came before you last year on Early Street. Now that was rezoned to R1. And the two of the five lots that are approved in the sketch plan, there's two lots fronting on Early and three will be accessed by an unpaved road. And in fact, that's probably gonna be on your next agenda as a final plat, too. So, so it's unusual, yes. It's not necessarily ideal, but it's, it's responding to the occasional request from someone who owns enough land to split it into more than three lots and wants to do it all at one time, rather than wait a year and then subdivide it with just a staff sign off. Because he could, if he had just split out two lots, you know, staff could have signed, after rezoning, staff could sign off on it. Because there's, he wants to get it all done at once, which really is ideal because then we all know what's happening. It has to go before you all for final plat approval as a quote-unquote "major subdivision." So he's telling us what he wants to do up front. And we, and we've had several meetings with Mr. Carlson and really did talk through, do you wanna just do one or two now? Do you wanna do? So really, this came from an initial conversation where I think maybe just one or two, to where he decided to recombine the parcel in the lower right and then just do it all at once. And we encouraged him to really think ahead and what do you want to do? What do you wanna see here? Because it just makes it more streamlined in the long run, that the plat tells the whole story. So our ordinances don't support this kind of thing, really. And we have charted that mid-path just to accommodate the occasional request. And requiring a paved road here would encourage the owner probably to continue to subdivide. And that's not what we necessarily wanna do on a, on a state highway.
So I have a question. So
Come, come back to the mic if you would.
I did that again, didn't I? So Lot 1 is staying AR1, is that correct? Okay, and then where it says Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, that's only being rezoned to AR2? Not his existing home, is that correct?
That's correct. Where the two lots will be six acres or more, they're staying in the current zoning, AR1. And the, the proposal is that three, three rear lots, which together add up to about 3.2.
I guess I misunderstood. I thought he was trying to get it all rezoned to AR2. So if, if Lot 1 and Lot 2 stay AR1, I mean, I guess theoretically, he could come back next year or whatever and try to have it rezoned and do three, or if he sold it like that, is that correct?
Uh, sure, he can request that, yes.
Or if he sold it, then, say I bought it, I could come to y'all and say, "Hey, I wanna get Lot 1 rezoned to AR2 so I can put three lots there," is that correct?
Um, and it looks like there's currently a house there.
No, I'm talking about
The other one.
The other lot.
This one?
Yes.
Yes, that's right. If, if you and a surveyor could make it work, theoretically, yes, this could be further subdivided if an access easement were, it shows an easement, that must be an existing easement?
No, they just cut it.
Oh, it's utility, access and utility. So it's theoretically possible, but it would depend.
So I own this lot on the left and I have an easement. So if I wanted to come and I could, I guess, rezon that too? If I wanted to?
Anyone can request it.
Okay.
You know, we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case. And, and the driveway access to 119 is, is a consideration, that's DOT, so.
Right, but I already have an access, that's what I'm saying. So if, if this gets approved, then I can come and do the same thing, theoretically.
Theoretically.
Okay.
I don't know if those two lots there would support, AR2 wouldn't, there's not enough land there for three lots, is there?
The, the proposed future Lot 2 is
You gotta have one acre per, per lot for R2, right?
AR2, yes, one buildable acre, according to the Health Department.
So what's the size of those two lots on the?
They're over acre, the three lots on the back, all of them's over acre.
I know those are, I'm talking about down here, the bottom ones, he's just, not that one.
This one is six, this one is 6.26, this proposal.
That's not being rezoned.
No, no, I'm talking about where your area is right now, how big is that lot?
This, this exists and offhand, I can't say how large it is. It's probably two acres. And it, the proposal is to combine it with the bigger parcel and then.
When we were originally doing this, not to cut you off, Ms. Theresa, we went in, Lot 1 was originally gonna be the, the three home sites. Out of respect for the webs, they already have a house that's way over half a million dollars back there. We, we, we cleared out a vegetation buffer even now. If we decide to build our own home place right there, the land, there was a little bit of wetlands on the far left of that corner. So we did over an acre on, on that property. And we moved all three home sites after talking with Mark Glisten and Theresa and them to do Lot 3, 4, and 5 on the left side of that property. Just because there is no home sites, it wouldn't be affecting anybody. You know, we were looking to put in, instead of putting a, on this, on the main highway, 2.2 acres that we currently own, we can right now put a mobile home there. But instead of putting it there on 119, we decided that we would just rezone it, go to the expense and, and, and put it back there in the back of the property, so it would not affect it. I personally do not like mobile homes, but we are in a seller's market and there is nothing to buy. I have two children and Judge Secretary also has a third grandchild. And as family property, I'm gonna honor her wishes and her kids are gonna, her great-grandchildren will move back there on that property. As of, you know, me and my wife are staying currently on Lot 2. Eventually, we look to either on Lot 1 to build something there or we will relocate, so.
I'm not opposing you, James, I'm just saying.
Right, I just wanted to make sure. But logically, we were going on Lot 1, we were putting all three of the lots there with an access there. And then when we started and we actually walked through with Mark Glisten and walked through the surveying, it would have been kinda bad for y'all because we would have had three mobile homes in y'all's front yard.
Yeah.
And logically, we could have done that and, and went to the zoning and done all that. We moved it all to the Lot 2, 3, 4, and 5 on the left corner because it is fields, pastures, and wooded property. And there is vegetation buffers that were put in so that they would not have full access and see what is along. I understand about mobile homes. I don't care for mobile homes.
Well, that's not, that's not the question right now, we're trying to The question I have here, Theresa, the blue lines you've got right there, all that is not being rezoned R2?
No.
AR2.
That's what I thought, that's why I was asking.
No, the
Just that.
It's 3.87 acres, it's the total of these three lots in the rear. So just back here.
They don't have two, two lots, it'll be eight, it'll be six acres. The other three is gonna be one point something acres each. And they got two 6-foot rightways going to the property, two different places.
Yep, okay. All right, I follow. Any other question, discussion? Anybody else speaking in opposition or for? Anyone else wants to speak to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and we'll hear from the board. Any comments, discussion?
I guess my question is futuristic. I know we don't have a crystal ball, but with this being split up to a major subdivision, it, it's unlike anything else like that in that area. So do we have possible issues in, in the future? I know private property rights is Mr. Carlson's property and he has the plans for the, the kids. But I'm just, as all the things we've seen here recently, somebody's always gotta spend, not talking about Mr. Carlson, but if we go the major subdivision route, then what does that open us up to down the line? That's, that's just my question.
Because you certainly, I don't think you would want to have a lot, it's hard to say it, 2, I think it is, subdivided into three or four lots if it was large enough for that and still have a dirt road servicing all those lots. And that's to your issue. Then we got a private road that we're gonna hear from constituents. I pay my taxes and I've got, we've got eight homes out there on a dirt road, who's gonna maintain it?
Somebody maintains it to begin with, but then somebody falls off of it and then
It's not your issue, I know.
It's not, but
They know what they're buying when they buy it. If you buy on a dirt road and you know it's private, it's yours.
Of course, the county owns it.
That's just me.
County owns dirt roads, too, that we take care of.
It's theirs, they take care of it.
The attorney doesn't do their due diligence, is what gets people in a pickle, yeah.
Somebody spending that kind of money, they need to know what they own.
That's true.
What I don't understand is, without a variance from the requirement of it being a major subdivision, does it not have to go through sketch plan, design, all of that? And, and roads to county standards?
Green space?
Yeah, I mean, if
If it's truly a
And I'm not saying we have to do it, there are variances away from that. But is, is that how we should be doing it unless we grant the variance to the contrary? I'm not sure this simple rezoning is gonna absolve without further action from the board.
So you're saying if, if the board were to approve the rezoning of this to R2?
It's a major subdivision.
It's a major subdivision and we're not necessarily approving right now that you could do those three lots without the things that are required?
We're not approving this plat, right? We're just, we're approving a parcel
That's what I'm saying.
As R2, right?
AR2.
So we're not approving this plat or
You may
Really, we're not approving a subdivision. We're approving a rezoning of a parcel of four, I don't know how many, 3, 4, 5 acres, whatever it is.
That's where it gets confusing because
I just wanna get my head around that. This is a little different than, than typical.
The lots 1 through 5, but he's only rezoning lots 3, 4, and 5. So it is confusing.
And I'm not trying to confuse, but
And you got two six, you got two 6-foot easements, so you can have three, three houses on a 6-foot easement on, on improved thing and you got, you got two of them. You got one going down the right side and then one down the middle. So they got plenty of easement far as the houses on unimproved.
But the question before us is, can we, do you wanna approve a rezoning from R1 to R2 that permits the possibility of this major subdivision? And then to your point, you would have to come back for a variance if you don't require a paved road and all the
That's my understanding.
All the other things. So it's not a done deal that you could just develop this without coming back with a sketch plan? Is that what we're saying? Theresa, you wanna weigh in, is that?
That's what you're saying, that's not how we've handled these. But this is unusual and the one I referenced earlier on Early Street And the one I referenced earlier on Early Street is, which is coming back, I think, next agenda, that's, that's fairly similar in that it's a couple of lots fronting on the road and then three accessed by, uh, an unpaved road, off a paved road. And because we, our ordinance just doesn't handle that, it doesn't accommodate that, so we try to find a way to balance everyone's interests and, and treat it like sort of a supercharged minor subdivision. It's not going to be involving new infrastructure or a county maintained road, but it, on the other hand.
Is it, you understand that, that they would need to come back to get permission for a variance since it is three lots? And technically, right now, it's a major subdivision.
That is not what we have been anticipating. I mean, it's major because it's, because it's not minor, because it's more than three lots, total more than three lots. It's creating a total of five lots from what was two lots. And so it's not a staff sign off, it becomes a major subdivision.
I get that, but what is, what is our ordinance required? Does it not require a variance if you're gonna do something less than paved roads if you got two lots going to five lots?
Unfortunately, the ordinance just doesn't accommodate this kind of split, it just, it doesn't.
You got some input that might help us with this?
Uh, Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager. The code actually does say if it's a major subdivision, it requires to go through a sketch plan and it must have a plan for infrastructure. The Early Street project she referred to would be the same as this one. Because it's five lots, they have to do a stormwater plan. Now, far be it, it's gonna be a very simple plan, it's not going to be regional stormwater pond with ditches and pipes everywhere. But they will have to go through that process, is what we did with the Early Street project, that's what we'd be doing on this. And the final plat does come back to you for approval.
Okay. In the Early Street, we're still in the process of doing that one.
Yeah, that's what's on the, soon to be coming up future agenda is the approval of the.
I understand that it'll be, uh, if we get a plat in the next few days, it, the final plat will be on your next agenda. We approved rezoning and sketch plan for that last year, and they have done the grading and the stormwater.
So what, what would this gentleman have to bring back to us if the zoning is approved tonight?
A stormwater plan to meet the county engineers' requirements.
No, no request for a variance?
We didn't require that for Early Street, so.
Okay, so other than the stormwater plan, if we approve it tonight, we would expect that they would be able to move forward with the subdividing of this property in three lots? Does everybody understand what we're saying?
Speak up.
If, if we approve the rezoning tonight, other than the stormwater plan, um, there would be no need for them to come back and request a variance for a major subdivision?
If we followed suit.
If we follow suit, you'll be, if you approve the rezoning tonight, you're approving the three lots, except for the stormwater, you have to come back with that. Okay? Is there any more information you need to determine if this is a, a fit within our zoning and within this area, or you got some more questions? Remember, Mr. Loach questioned, are you opening the opportunity for more subdividing out here that is going to create issues, to your point, buyer beware when you buy property on dirt roads? And maybe we don't need to get into that area, worried about it.
I just believe people, I don't think we can just take care of everybody. I mean, if, if they're buying, they know what they're buying, I think. Um, if, if he decides to sell it. At this point, he's not, but you never know what anybody's gonna do with their property and.
Sell it and rent them out.
He could, it's, it's his property.
But at least the way he's done it, I mean, in my opinion, they're, they're, they're out of the way, they're not, uh, he took it off, if it's beside his house, I'd be more concerned with it.
Yeah, I mean, he's made the effort to.
If you come to Mike.
Everything goes on record here.
I went to UGA, sorry. Um, no, to James's defense, obviously, he's been a great neighbor since I've been there and we've had some dealings together and I, I thoroughly like James. I guess I misunderstood whenever I saw it, I thought the whole thing was being rezoned. So, I mean, yes, I wouldn't want somebody telling me what I can and can't do with my property. So I get what he's saying, I just didn't want to open up a can of worms to where he rezones everything, and then the next thing you know, you've got fifteen lots.
Right, they'd have to come back for that.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to know.
Lot Two is currently AR One?
Yeah.
It's currently all AR One, yes. Everything around there is AR One.
And they're just breaking those three lots in the back and making them AR Two?
Yeah.
All right, I think we've got the information.
And just to clarify what I was saying, that with the variance, and we've done this before, instead of, um, going through as a major subdivision, we granted a variance on the number of lots off of a single easement. That's what I was.
We see that a lot.
That's what I was getting to where.
Okay.
That, you know, takes it away from the major subdivision, but it does bring it before the public, you know, in that sense.
And also, if they come before us, I mean, we can deny if he tries to split it up. It may be a different board, but there's always notes to go back to, to refer to this situation to say, you know, this is kind of it for this, for this situation. And then at that point, we can make that decision, but this isn't my district, I'm just, depending where I'm at. It will be next month.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. We've closed the public hearing, we've heard from the board, is there a motion to move forward or deny?
Um, based on the fact that, uh, Mr. Carlson's doing this for children, um, it's off a state highway, he does have a sixty foot easement. It does make me nervous that this, this will be a separate, um, this will be different from anything else that I'm aware of in that area. Um, he, he has, I think, made a valid effort, um, to be a good neighbor. Um, he put the other two lots in the back part of the property. Um, so with that being said, I'll, I'll recommend approval with staff and planning board recommendations.
So you got a motion by Mr. Loach, second Mr. Loper to approve with staff and planning board recommendations, all in favor, say aye.
Ah.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll have the second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by James M. Carlson to rezon three point eight seven acres located at two oh seventy seven Highway one nineteen north from AR One to AR Two to allow for a five lot subdivision, map number three eighty seven, parcel number one in Third District.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Mr. DeLoach, second Mr. Burdette to approve the second reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. I'm number nine.
I'm gonna recuse myself again now.
All right. If you'll, records will note that, uh, Commissioner Loper has recused himself and is moving down to the audience. The planning board recommends approving the application by Ruben E. Jenkins the Third, request to rezon one point oh five acres located at three fifty one Webb Road from AR One to B Two to allow for a commercial use, map number three nine, parcel eighteen in the Fourth District.
So there's a long history here. Uh, this parcel, the proposed, that, that parcel outlined in blue up there is the parcel we're talking about. It's off Webb Road on basically, well, just an extension of Webb Road. It's, it's a unpaved, um, private access driveway. The history here, though, is that the parcel next to it in blue here is zoned B Two currently. It was rezoned back in nineteen eighty and has been operating on and off over the years as automotive repair, um, facility. We've had some code enforcement actions out there over the years to clean up junked cars. Currently, it's looking really great, it's all cleaned up, looking good. Uh, the proposal from Mr. Jenkins is to rezone the parcel, you know, here, the star on it, to B Two as well, so that he can have both of the parcels that he owns in the same zoning district and he can park his trucks there. Uh, we're not entirely sure of exactly the scope of the proposed business, but we're not sure if there will be a business. He simply, at the planning board, he said he simply wanted to park his own vehicles there. Uh, but to rezon to B Two opens up the option or the opportunity for Mr. Jenkins or a future owner to operate a business there. And so going back over the, the timeline, this is what it looks like now, this is a close up when the aerial photography was done over a year ago, it's much cleaner now. This is back in nineteen eighty from the file, it, it's always looked like that, there have always been, you know, apparently in the past, there've always been junked cars there. Uh, so this is what it looks like now, it looks great, it's been cleaned up, we have no issues with it from a code enforcement standpoint. The concern really is that this is a private driveway off Webb Road, which is a surface treated road, which is off McCall Road, and it's putting business, potentially intensive business activities in here between this new subdivision and these homeowners who have yet to buy their houses and will, might be in for a bit of a shock when they, you know, in the future, if they find they're near a, a, an automotive business. So we were concerned on all of those counts, we were concerned, there's no proposed bus, there was no actual business plan, it's, it's, it's just a rezoning so he could park his trucks. But if there, if it's rezoned, he could actually operate a business there, and we don't know what that business will be. So staff had concerns. Uh, staff recommended denial, but at the planning board, uh, Mr. Jenkins and the planning board did agree that, let me see here. Staff, the planning board did, did recommend approval because they felt, based on Mr. Jenkins's presentation, that he was simply parking personal veh, trucks there. So w- we, we, we differed on that account. Uh, and staff are still recommending, recommending denial, but the planning board is recommending approval.
Okay. We'll open a public hearing and see if there's anyone speaking in favor of this rezoning tonight. Mr. Jenkins here, would you like to speak?
How you doing, sir?
Good, how you doing?
On three forty three Webb, when she already said was commercial.
Did, did you get his name?
Ruben Jenkins.
Okay, Ruben Jenkins, okay, go ahead.
And then the property next door, purchased it back in November. The disaster that was there earlier, I had nothing to do with, I've done all the cleaning up. And they had, they ran, I think, a rollback service out of there. And when Mr. Daryl Carter owned it, I, who knows what he ran out of there. But, uh, I log. And, uh, so my tractor and trailer sat there and, uh, I got two, and two, two trailers. And there's a six.
Are you looking to park, are you gonna be working on trucks?
Well, I mean, I, I do service them and I do change my.
Just for yours, just for your equipment?
Yes, sir.
So you have a trucking company?
Rudy's Hollin, Rudy's Hollin.
You have a trucking company?
Rudy's Hollin.
Teresa, so you do have a trucking company?
But you're not running a, you're not running a full-fledged mechanic shop?
No, sir.
You're just doing your, your stuff?
My stuff, and I'm the one that cleaned it all up.
You say in the logging business, you're not gonna be stacking logs or anything back there?
No, sir. Let me change that, I haul for Mr. Bill Exley and I haul for, uh, Lynn Jeffers. I'm a hauler, I don't actually cut the lumber. And ninety percent of the time, which you can see in the picture, my one tractor and trailer sits there and then I'll have one extra trailer, the other truck sits at my son's house in, uh, Elbel.
So two trucks and two trailers total?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I do have a floater trailer, but most time it's in the woods, just so you know upfront.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I know a lot of, there's been other businesses there that, and it wasn't commercial, I don't know how they got away with it, I'm not trying to.
I don't either.
I, I cleaned it up, so.
We're trying to clean all that up.
Yes, sir.
We've hired additional code enforcement officers.
And the young lady last time just wanted to know what the, uh, around it was and, uh, it, it is privacy fenced around.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we may have some questions for you, but we'll see what else.
Yes, sir.
Said tonight. Anyone else speaking, uh, for or against, in opposition to this rezoning request? Anyone speaking in opposition to this rezoning request? Okay, seeing no one speaking in opposition, we'll close the public hearing and listen to the board's, uh, thoughts and comments and see if they have any questions.
For me, we already have ordinance in place that allows for you to park your personal vehicles. You know, if you're in the trucking business, you can, you can already do that. To open up a B Two at this place and start allowing for commercial business, I don't think would be a good idea. It was, mirrors the same thing we already talked about earlier, you know, we're gonna put a trucking company on a B Two.
So to your point, this gentleman could go ahead and do what he's asking to do.
Yeah, we already have a provision in that when we did the truck routes, we said people who own their own trucks.
We're gonna come back to the microphone, please, sir.
You know, can already do that.
Mr. Jenkins, um, are you aware that you can already park?
Is there a number limit, is the question?
Are, are you aware that you could park your vehicles there now, is what I?
Yes.
And already parked at three forty three, where I live, where the building is in our office, it's already commercial.
Yes, sir. And we, we already have an ordinance in place, you know, when we made truck routes, it allows you to park your vehicle at your home. You know, so, I mean, you can already park your truck there.
Well, he's saying he's already parking.
That's all you're intending to do, you know?
And, and I do service them, I work on them, I just don't want to hear a lot about me working on my trucks.
Right.
So he, three forty three is his lot as well?
Yes, sir.
And he's already parking trucks.
It's already zoned?
Yes, sir.
It's already, already B Two.
It's been that way since nineteen eighty or eighty one.
So he can leave it as it sits and still park on three forty three and not have problems, is what I'm hearing? Leaving it without rezoning it, just to park?
If it's just his stuff, yeah.
If it's your stuff, we don't, you don't even have to rezon it, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, as lo, I would say, as long as it's not a trucking company, I mean.
In name only, I mean, I'm sure as hell they'll see.
He's got a couple of trucks, I mean, that's, that's why we did what we did with the, the truck route. So people, the drivers, at the end of the day, they can go home and take their truck, they're not searching for a place to, to park. You know, so we were sensitive to that, but we don't want a trucking company beside a, a development either. So that's what we're, we're trying to.
So my building that's already there, that's already commercial, could actually be a trucking company?
No, sir, it couldn't.
No.
Not under a B Two.
It's, it's, it's on.
It is already a B Two.
No, have a trucking company in a B Two.
I got you.
He's talking about building, or come, bringing in other trucks to work on and growing your company. You're, you're looking at keeping your two trailers.
I'm not trying to do that.
That's, I, I think you do that already, you know, as long as you're just taking care of your own stuff and you're, you've got your truck there and we're gonna have provisions for that without opening up a can of worms, we're doing another B Two. Because a B Two does not allow a trucking company. So if you're operating a trucking company on a B Two, you're in violation of our code right now. We don't have the provision for that. So if you're not, and you're just got parking your stuff.
I park it and work on it there.
And that's, that's, that's your right to do, it's your property, I think we already.
Teresa, do you have any i- issue with what, um, Commissioner Burdette is suggesting?
Unless you're planning to do something commercially.
We kind of wondered why.
Why would you go B Two?
Was rezoning the additional parcel, because it's not necessary, and that's what made us wonder if there could be a plan in the future to operate a business, and that was the concern. And so when the planning board recommended approval, they added the conditions, and they're the standard ones, but that the lot meet the requirements of the zoning district and that, and that any future business would require a sketch plan approval, assuming it met the requirements of the B Two zoning district. If it was more intensive, then we'd have to have a conversation about conditional use or rezoning, and then that's when it would come back, you know, for, for more consideration. So we, we had the same hesitancy as you did.
So is your concern that it would be, uh, B Two trucking, or are you concerned with it being B Two period?
B Two period.
Okay.
If sells the property, it's B Two, then they can do whatever they want, open up a whole nother thing and we don't have a say in.
Okay, all right.
When it can already do what you want to do.
So in other words, right now.
Tensions are just to do what you're talking about, you, he's good to go.
You can park your trucks on your property under that.
If that's your personal stuff.
Personal trucks for your business, and you can work on your trucks. But you could bring in other trucks, other people's trucks, and park other people's trucks on that property. Would that meet your need that you're looking to accomplish?
And that's on the three fifty one, not the three forty three side.
Either one.
Either one.
If that's your property, I mean, then ten of what we're trying to do is not to hurt the little guy who's got one or two trucks trying to make a living. I'm into the trucking business myself. The ten is not to have, you know, I got two, now I got four, now I got seven, now I'm in somebody's backyard with ten trucks. You know, now I got, I'm working on ten, it, believe me, I know how that grows and gets out of hand. So we want to make sure we don't do that, we're trying to push that into more industrial type zones so we don't get close to a neighborhood with no buffer or a B Two buffer when we should have something a little more industrial.
So.
Respect their rights as well, and we want to respect your ri, rights. So we, when we built these truck routes, we said, let's allow the guys to be able to park at home, especially in rural areas, and you got room, park at home, you know, there's, there's, it's not a big deal. We're just trying to prevent the industrial part of that to blossom. So we got to be careful how, where we go with B Two or B Three or I One and, you know, if that's our intent to be industrial there, that's another story. But if our intent is to stay residential, you just happen to. is to stay residential, you just happen to have a B-two in the middle of a whole bunch of residential stuff, which I don't know how that happened. But, uh, you know, things happened a long time ago, we're still working on, but-
We don't wanna make it worse.
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, control that and respect people's rights, respect people's rights to their property as well. But from everything you're telling us today, I think you're already able to do what you're, what you're trying to do. You're, you know, without any problem. You can work on your truck. You can do what you want. It's your property. You can park.
But he doesn't live on this property. You realize that?
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, it's still his, his land.
But you could not expand this to, you know, several, several more trucks?
And that's what's happened in the past, is why I'm wary of doing it. People do a, okay, I'm gonna do this. I'm doing a rural business, and I have my own truck, and the next time you, you look at it-
They hire five drivers.
They got five guys and twenty pieces of equipment out there. It happens all the time.
I ain't got that much hairless.
Yeah. And I know that, believe me, I know that too, but, you know, we're trying to keep, create a fair landscape for everybody.
Sounds like-
If I wanna operate my company, I need to be in an industrial area, and my, my company's in an industrial park. I paid a whole lot more for it to do that, and blood, sweat, and tears to get there, but-
Sounds like the size of your operation now, you're currently in compliance with the law by parking your own personal trucks that you use for your business, those two or three that you talked about, and that you service them, when you need to service them. And that would not materially conflict with the neighborhood right next door to you. So, it sounds like you-
I can't argue with you guys. I was trying to do, you know, do something-
You're doing good. I think, I appreciate that. Trying to do the right thing.
I appreciate it, too.
My other concern is, you zone it, you say, okay, I don't need that piece of property anymore. Somebody else buys it. There's a whole lot more into developing it into commercial business than you are, and we got a problem on our hands. We, we've just created our own problem.
But we don't need to rezon it to, to do what you're currently doing, doesn't sound like. That's the biggest takeaway I'm hearing tonight.
But Roger, have we, have we defined what, what is too big? How many?
We need to do more of that.
I just want, you know, we need to be clear on that.
I think we do need to be more clear on that, to, that way we know, hey, this is a bona fide trucking company, and this is not. Now, I've seen people that have, like this gentleman, they'll have a son that drives, too. They'll have two trucks, and, you know, that, that to me is a rural business, or a place where you operate from your home, and you're not trying to, to blow up and hire ten people, you know? That's where we're getting into the problem, okay? It's rural business, it's AR, it's, then I got one truck, and, you know, we got a place on eighty, did the same thing. He did a B-three conditional, and I just wanna park my stuff, and now there's a whole full-fledged trucking company. We've gotta, we've gotta define that. That's, that's gonna be part of our job. But, I mean, from what he's telling me, his intent is today, he's already has the right to do that, I would think, unless, unless it's different than what his intent is.
I think he's good to go.
Yeah, I think he's fine.
All right.
I wouldn't bother him, let him do his thing.
So, there's a request from AR-one to B-two. We've already closed the public hearing. We listened to the board. Are you ready to make a motion to approve or deny?
I make a motion to deny.
Motion by Mr. Burdette to, to, which is alternative to, to deny the request?
I'll second, but make sure you have to understand, you can continue to operate your little independent business.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Nobody, wouldn't want it any differently.
All right. Motion by Mr. Burdette. I have two seconds. I'll take Mr. Floyd's on this one. Um, all in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing, uh, the, uh, request is denied. We don't have a need for second he- we, gentleman's already left. It sounds like he can continue to, to do his business that he's doing.
I think he's in compliance right now. And I appreciate him cleaning that up, because he was out of compliance before that happened. I don't know what happened to that.
Absolutely. All right. Out of number eleven, keeping, moving, the planning board recommends approving an application by Gary Farrell for a variance from, uh, section three point three to reduce required accessory building setback located at one one two nine Ralph Ron Road to allow for a replacement accessory structure, zone R-one, map number three ninety-one B parcel two in the fourth district.
So, this is, uh, not a rezoning. This is variance. This is, uh, switching gears. The homeowner purchased the home. There was an accessory building located approximately where that red outline is, at the end of the driveway. Um, he has removed that and replaced it with a larger metal building, and either added the slab or increased the size of the slab. But all of this was to keep it in line with the driveway, and over time, the neighbor issued, uh, the neighbor complained to code enforcement because he felt that it was too close to the property line, and code enforcement agreed when they measured it that it was, in fact, uh, less than ten feet from the property line, which is what is required for an accessory building. So, that is why, uh, Mr. Farrell is here. He is seeking a building permit after the fact from our building official, and they're working together. And he will, in order for him to get the full approval of that permit, he will need a variance to the side setback requirement, so that zoning can sign off on the building permit. So, that's kind of a roundabout story. Uh, at the planning, staff are recommending approval just to move this along. Uh, we didn't see any particular hardship or har- harm that was created by the location, and it is a, more of a convenience to the homeowner. It was already located there, seeing that the driveway is located at sort of the extreme edge of the property. But at the planning board, neighbors on either side did voice concerns about the effect that this building might have had on drainage in the area. Uh, Mr. Farrell did provide me with, uh, photos showing the before and afters. There, there's a lot of standing water when it rains here, and I can pull that slideshow up in a minute, but I'll just show you here. This is a front view. I took these, um, one of these today, one of them was a few days ago. But basically, this, the bottom picture there, that, that is the shed we're talking about. It's a gray metal shed with a white door. It's, uh, a couple of feet from the fence, which itself is a couple of feet in from the property line. So, it's, it's, it's too close to the property line, but, but he did bring the fence in, so he's, you know, trying to keep everything off the property line. Um, this is the, the neighbor's property here. You can see that he has a, um, carport in his driveway. That's a good distance from the fence. That's not an issue, I believe. Uh, this is a, a view from, from inside Buckfield Plantation, and actually, there is a second accessory building. This one does meet setback requirements, so it's just a matter of getting the building permit approved after the fact, and that's coming down to a review of engineered drawings, and that's very, just, there's no variance required for this one. Uh, I can pull up that other slideshow if Mr. Farrell wishes when he comes up to speak, but generally speaking, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a simply a matter of convenience. The, the shed is lined up with the driveway. We have seen these kind of applications before, and the board has approved at least one other that was similar to this, uh, because it is a convenience to the property owner and no particular hardship to the neighbors.
Okay.
When was the, the building built, the accessory building?
Uh, this exists, current one was within the last year, uh, that it went up, and Mr. Farrell can give an exact time for that. The, there was one pre-existing, he said, and that was what he replaced. It was a, it was-
Previous existing one was not encroaching on the, uh-
No, it was, it, it's always been encroaching. The, the-
Was the slab expanded, or is it the same-sized slab?
You know, I, the, I'm not entirely sure. I, I think Mr. Farrell can answer that. At, at the planning board, he did talk about pouring a slab, and I'm not sure if he extended the existing or poured a new slab. Uh, so-
The, the slab, we're gonna find out in a minute. You don't think is any closer to the property line than it was?
Oh, the slab, it, it is encroaching, not on the property line. It is encroaching within the required setbacks.
Right. But was the original slab, is any different from that one? That's what we don't know.
Uh, as far as we know, it was in the same general location. So, and, and in fact, if you look at the aerial photography of this neighborhood, there's quite a few instances where sheds are too close to the property line. Uh, but we haven't had complaints about them. We haven't followed up. We're kind of waiting to see how this goes tonight. But this is the aerial, if you wanted to see. There, there, there are a lot of instances where-
I just wanna make sure I'm clear when I'm asking.
Yeah.
That building there-
Go back, wait, go back to that, oh, I'm sorry. Go back to that, or, the overview.
Yeah.
If you look right next door, how far is, is that one in compliance next door?
Uh, we don't think that one's in compliance, no.
That doesn't look like it.
I mean, this happens in a lot of neighborhoods, 'cause I've seen it in mine, but, I mean, they look like they're within five feet of property line, too.
They're on the property.
And, and that one that's in the red box is the one we're talking about now. Did that one move closer to the property line, stay at the same distance from the property line, or?
We don't know for sure. We have not- Because there wasn't a permit on file for the original one, so we can't compare site plans. So, we're going by-
Let's open the public hearing and hear from the applicant tonight, uh, 'cause he probably can answer some of these questions for us.
Good evening. My name is Gary Farrell.
Hey, Mr. Farrell. Good to have you tonight.
Thank you. The pre-existing, uh, building was a wood shed, I think probably from Home Depot or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
It was a barn-type building, really tall. I think it was between twelve and fourteen feet wide. I really don't recall. Uh, whoever had placed it on the property, uh, had, it was on skids, and they put it directly in the dirt. It was directly in the dirt. There was no slab. So, it was all rotten when we bought the property. We thought perhaps we could rebuild it and do repairs, but as we started to dismantle it, it was really, really bad. Rotten, really rotten. And we, uh, I believe we put it over the existing footprint. I think I have pictures to show that, because it was indented, and it was so corroded. It was, uh, you know, the decay of it just being there so long, and critters were living under there and stuff. I, I did move it forward a little bit, because it had a really large, uh, steel ramp.
Forward on your lot, not closer to the lot?
That's right. That's right.
Do we have any pictures of the original? It just makes a difference in my mind if the-
I do have photographs with me of the original, uh, that I took. I don't know if on slab.
Drainage photos that you provided?
Okay, drainage show, photos show it, yes. Absolutely. I did provide some of those.
That might be good. And, and my, my point, I'm just trying to say, if, if the neighbor in him had this understanding, even if it was just prescriptive, or whatever you wanna call it, 'cause it's been there for ten years, and he's putting in the exact same spot, I would be more leaning toward the variance than I would if, if it was just brought close without checking with proper permitting to start with. But you usually assume that if something has been approved in the past, you could replace it, and I could see his, his thinking on that.
I can see this gentleman picking up the phone and calling code enforcement, saying, well, then go check these others also, and I wanna file a complaint against all those folks and see where this goes.
Yeah.
Because I think it'd stir up a hornet's nest. Everybody'd be wanting a variance.
My big question would be, why not get a permit when, before you built it?
Well, sir, I regret that. Uh, we, we stopped at a lot of the roadside places. All of them were willing to deliver buildings the same week. It just didn't seem like, I mean, they were like, we can deliver it Thursday. But they were all wood, and we had struggled with the whole wood thing, and then the, even the ones that we saw, it was a color issue, trying to keep, keep the colors the same as the, like, the neighbor's roof is, uh, high-definition black and gray. So was ours. Uh, the doors are black. The window trim is black, you know? So, we went with the black and gray, trying to keep it in, you know, uniform with the surrounding houses. Uh, there's black and gray mixed with the red brick and stuff. The fence we're building, we're making out of cement board, 'cause we've had so much, you'll see in these pictures, the water drainage issues.
What's the footprint of your slab?
Sixteen by thirty.
And this, all this flooding's before the building?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Teresa, can you go back to the picture that shows the houses? Yeah, okay. So, the, the blue line, that's the lot. The neighbor that's concerned, and we'll probably hear from them in a minute, is the one on the top, right? And th- their building there on their property line, is it not on the property line?
Uh, no. Without a survey, we can't say for certain. It does appear to be closer than ten feet.
It's ten feet. It's ten feet from the property line.
You measure it?
Yes.
No, 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 no. I, I, did you, the marking in the back, that chain-link fence?
The chain-link fence is not the line. You got your fence on the line.
No, sir. No, sir.
His, his fence, he's got a chain-link fence right there.
Yes, sir.
And it's two feet from the property line. Your, your-
No, sir.
Your fence is on the property line, and his, and his building, his building is, is ten feet from the property line. No, I did not measure it, but I looked at it.
Yes, sir. Okay, the, the property markers are where his chain-link fence is.
The what?
The property markers-
Is where?
Is where his black chain-link fence is. That two feet that I created as buffer is my property. I moved my fence two and a half feet in, so that I could walk that perimeter and service the fence and paint it. His chain-link fence is on the property line.
It's on the property line. You sure of that?
Yes, sir. I have pictures to prove it.
Your fence is on the property line?
John, James?
Our, our cement, uh, fence that we're building is, is being pulled two feet off, has already been pulled two feet off.
I have pictures to prove that with me.
The, the black chain-link fence, there was, uh, our, when we moved in, there was already a fence up against his-
Yeah, I'm sorry. Any kind of mic. I, I got-
Yeah, come up here and-
Now, are you speaking for or against?
Uh, I'm for. I live at, uh, I'm, my name's John Vaz. I live, uh, at the property in question.
Okay.
Uh, when we moved into the property, uh, there was a chain-link fence, uh, belonging to the neighbor. Right up against that, touching practically, was a, a wood fence that was dilapidated.
And you moved the, the-
And we, we tore that one down and moved it in two feet. So, now that property is-
I'm familiar.
So, your, your fence, you-
Markers there?
Yes, there's markers, and they're visible.
So, your chain-link is two feet on, uh, from the property line, right?
Uh, we don't have a chain-link, but our fence is two feet from the property line, yes.
Yes, you got one, you got one there. I looked at it yesterday.
Our chain-link fence is on the property line.
That's not ours, but, uh, our fence. Ours is the, the cement board fence that's pulled off two feet.
Gotcha. Here's the cement, cement board fence, okay. And so, to you, to your knowledge, the building that's next to your property is not ten feet off the line, height?
I, I would say no, if I-
We don't have any-
I don't have tape measure.
And if somebody's got some measurements certified, we don't have any way to verify that tonight. Okay, all right.
I do have pictures on my phone that, sir, uh, the, the property line that you're talking about, his building is a little over seven feet from the property line. And the, the property marker, I made sure that when I built that fence, the property marker's at the back corner of that black chain-link fence, and it's just to the outside of his fence. We had a fence there that we took down. I have pictures of that fence that was on the property line, adjacent to his black chain-link fence. We have old pictures. We took that fence, removed it, and moved our fence in more than two feet, so we could walk our property, not encroach his, not, not have any issues with his chain-link fence, so we could service it, paint it, trim it, things like that. 'Cause I wanna paint that fence when we're done. It's a cement board, a hardy board, and, uh-
I think we understand what you're, what you're asking, and what you believe to be correct on this. Um, is there anyone else tonight speaking for this that would like to speak before we listen to opposition? You can speak later if we have questions. All right, let's see if there's anyone speaking in opposition to this variance request tonight. If they would, come to the microphone, give your name, and state your, your reason for the, uh, concern on the variance.
Good evening. My name's Dale Grave Line. I live at eleven fifteen on it. It's my chain-link fence to, if you're in the, in our street facing the property on it, I'm to the left of him. I'm eleven fifteen. Um, not really sure where I should start on it. First thing, you know, that, I, I put that carport up a little, a little less than a year ago. I had no idea. I'm a homeowner. I'm not in a construction company such as he is. I didn't know if I needed to have a permit, what the requirements were. I went up to the permit office and, and, and learned about it, and learned that I did have to have a, a permit for it. I learned that I needed to be ten foot or more off the, off the, uh, off the side property line before I built that. I built mine on exist- uh, existing concrete structure on it. I didn't add anything. I just added a carport to protect my vehicles.
From these pictures here, which, which one are you discussing? Which, which property is yours?
Go back to the other one I, I asked you about.
One to the left.
The one on the left, let's hear it, here. The one on the left, let's hear it, here.
And, and can you back up to the other picture that I was asking about?
The overhead.
The overhead, there you go.
Yeah, that one there. You're the top corner.
I'm the top, correct.
With that little curved driveway going out. Okay. And the back building there, uh, are you telling us tonight that it's more than ten feet off your property line?
My building is ten feet from the property line, yes, sir.
Okay, I, I got you.
Oh, yes, Mr. Loper, I think you got me confused with his son or something.
You're not, you're not with those people?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, you the fellow I'm talking to?
Yes, sir.
The chain link fence to the right of that building on that top house, your wife or somebody told me yesterday that it was two feet off the right away.
Their fence is a little over two feet off of the property line, on their side of the property line. My chain link fence, the marker at the back of our property on it is approximately four to five inches maybe outside of my fence. My fence is about four to five inches inside the property line.
How far are you off the fence?
With my buildings, those are temporary, those are portable structures on it. They were there when I bought the property over, uh, about eleven years ago, and mine are ten feet off the line.
There's no slab on those?
There's, there's no slab, mine are on runners on it, they're sitting up on blocks. That's the only thing I did to mine. When I purchased the house, it was sitting flat on the ground. I lifted it, put concrete blocks underneath it, or concrete pads, uh, to keep mine from rotting on it. My whole thing is on it, we have, as a county, on it, we have these rules and laws in place on it. When you do a permit, one, you're supposed to do a permit before you build the fence and two buildings with slabs. That was not done. And had it, had that have been done, he would have known that he was not in compliance with it because they would have never approved a permit for where he wanted. The building in question on it has been moved closer to mine, to my property on it. There was not a slab there before. There is now. I'm not an engineer, but it doesn't, I mean, it's common sense. If you build a slab, you put a slab on there, it's gonna just, the, the water's got to go somewhere. We didn't have as much standing water on my side of the yard as there is now. It was built over there. I hate that he done it, but that's on him. That shouldn't be on me and I shouldn't have to suffer for it. Like I said, I built, I built a simple carport and found out that I, I needed a per, a building permit for it. I learned about it, learned what my requirements were, I needed to do that. I did that prior to putting my carport up. And I made sure it met the specifications on it. Only, I don't know what he's doing with these two buildings, really none of my business on it, but he's in the cabinet business, that's what they do for a living. If he's in construction, he should know that he had, had needed a permit before he erected a fence and two buildings.
I mean, what can he do to resolve this issue? You want to tear that building down?
If that's what it needs to be, why do we have these laws in place if we're not going to enforce them? Is my question. So what do you say if, if, if he's not-
He ran a variance. I mean, there's no way, I mean, maybe a ditch could be dug or some type of drain, I don't know, but, I mean, to-
But if he'd applied for the permit on it, they wouldn't have let him build a building there, is my question. Is it correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So because he didn't apply for a permit and went ahead and built it, and that makes it okay?
I'm not saying that, but again, you know, we try to listen to people and try to work with them. I mean, I don't, I'm trying to find a resolution. You wanted to tear it down, it sounds like. He's asking for a variance.
All I wanted him to do is, was go in compliance with what the county laws and rules have set in place.
The building, all the water off that, what, what, what'd he say it was, thirty feet long?
Right, and it's bigger than the one that was there to start with.
All that water off that roof on that building runs in his property. When it comes, I looked at it yesterday, I backed off there and looked at it. When that water comes off that roof, the, the building is not five feet off, and then he's got two feet overhang, and the water comes off there. All that water goes in his yard when it rains. I looked at it yesterday.
And a, and a drain system of some type versus tearing this thing down. I've been trying to find a, a resolution versus-
Well, that was-
The resolution would be-
I think that's a terrible idea to make somebody tear a building, if you can work out a resolution.
I think it's a terrible idea not to go by what the county laws and rules have in place.
I agree.
That's, that's what y'all over here didn't, I mean, to go by.
And that's true. What we're saying is if, if there was a resolution, then a variance could be created and it would be in compliance. Without a variance, it won't be in compliance. So that's what the commissioner's asking, is there something that could be done as a variance, so it would be in compliance, that would meet what you need, keep the water off your property. I mean, is the issue the, for you, is it this, I get the ordinance, I get the law.
I mean, that's, they're supposed to have a ten foot setback on it, and he's got less than four and a half, and if you measure to the roof where the water comes off, it's even less than that.
And I get that, but we may go out there and measure and find that yours is eight point five and ask you to move yours.
Mine's a portable structure, it was there when I bought it.
I, I, I know, I'm just saying that, but we're, we're looking to see is there a, a compromise or a variance that could be, if it solved your concerns, if the concern is not the site of the building, but the water it's putting onto your building, if there could be a gutter and ditching and he did whatever he had to do for stormwater runoff that satisfied you not receiving that water, would that be something that would be agreeable to you?
I, I mean, I don't, is it gonna gutter and ditch it all the way out to the front ditch that carries the water off from the property?
If he gut, if he puts a gutter on that side when it comes down-
It's just gonna concentrate where it comes out and goes under his fence onto my property.
Bet it up on his side. He turns the gutter this way.
Let it come out the other way and-
Okay, but that water can't run uphill and go to the other side of the building.
Well, if it naturally falls to your property, it's going that way anyway.
There didn't used to be a sixteen by thirty slab there, that the water used to soak in the ground.
And it flows onto your property anyway. That's where it was going to start with.
Yeah, but the-
That's what I'm saying.
But I, I can hear this gentleman's, part of the concern is you have a larger non-permeable surface.
Yeah.
So there, there's more water sitting there, so that is an issue. So if there was gonna be a compromise that created variance, it'd have to be where that water, first of all, did not fall on this gentleman's property, and then wherever it did fall, because it's not the, the ability to soak it in there, because you got thirty feet versus sixteen feet of slab, that's a lot of surface area. Then it'd have to be, uh, a sock drain or some kind of drain, something to get it to the ditch, to get it away from his parcel. And that'd have to be reviewed by stormwater. That's what our department could do. They could review a stormwater proposal that could satisfy this board that his concern for the water, which is your main issue.
Well, that, I mean, what, what, and, and the main issue is why, why do we have to get a permit before we build on it? Because if you're gonna create a variance for it on it, I'll just let it be known on it, you can come to F and H County on, build what you want to build on it, because they'll just give you a variance after the fact.
That's not appreciated. We're not trying to, to break our laws. We're trying to work with two constituents here to, to reach your resolve. And if your resolve is just to tear down the building, then that's what you're gonna say tonight as your opposition, and we'll, we'll take a vote on that. But if your position is, you don't want the water on your land, and I get it, he, he should have got a permit. I don't know what the violation or the requirement of this board would be for that. But I don't want you to sit there and tell us that we're just trying to break the law or try to allow this man to do what he wants to do. We're not trying to do that, we're trying to work with our constituents. Okay, and if we can't resolve-
My apologies, that's what, not what I was trying to imply on there, but I mean-
It sounded like. But what we're trying to do is if we can meet your concern, which we want to do, and allow this gentleman to have it, then we'd want to do that. But if we can't meet your concern, and it can't be done through stormwater, if that was the real issue, then I think we have to say he's got to move his building, you know? But we're just trying to find that. And everything's not black and white, I wish it was. And everybody doesn't realize that they need permits and people do things and we have to make lemonade out of lemon sometime.
I get you.
Okay, but I appreciate you, your comments, and we're trying to work with that, not sure where it's gonna go yet. But we're gonna discuss it some more.
He could put drains on that side and drain it, let it come back on his side and run to the ditch in front of the house, and that'd keep all that water off of him.
That's correct.
You could do a French drain, you could do a lot of things.
That'd be cheaper than tearing the building down.
Well, I, I'd like to, uh, him to go through the permitting process of getting with our folks to see if, because they'd have to look at that, and that'd be the cost of, of the, uh, landowner, property owner, to come up with, with our management, our stormwater management team, what could be done. And then see if, and you have to report to us if that's where the board wants to go. Yes, the water issue could be handled. Uh, but I do caution that this gentleman's got a point. Um, we set a precedent when we allow people to build buildings, and we don't make them bring, bring them down. We are setting a precedent for the next person that says-
And I am concerned with that too.
I agree a hundred percent. I just think it's a stretch just to ask a, a neighbor to tear down a building, if, if there's a resolution. And I think there's a way to drain that in a way not to affect this gentleman.
They can put the drainage on that side of it next to the fence and drain it to, he got a ditch in front of the house, and drain it to, to the front, and then now all that water would stay off of him.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand his point, I, but I think there's a way to do it.
Would that be satisfactory to you?
That's my main concern. And what you just said on it, I may have not put it in the right words, but that's, that's the precedent that, that that you're gonna say on it, if you, if you allow this to happen on there. I, I may have not chose the right words for it, but that's where I was going with it.
We, we, we want to be careful of that, but at the same time, we're trying to-
And I'm sensing that too. I think I talked to you or somebody called me about it. But then I look at this map and I see everybody else is that far away from the fence.
Yes, it's about-
It's a hard, hard sell.
Everybody else is over there, it's not affecting me. Whether they got permits to put those buildings there, I don't know.
And that's what I want to focus on, what's affecting you.
Yeah, if we can't resolve your water issues with this, then we'll have to, I feel like, encourage the board to make a decision to ma, to require this constituent to do something different with his building.
Yeah, I have a question. If, when, if he would have went the right routes and got his permit, would we have asked for a stormwater plan?
Yes.
No.
No.
No, for thirty, a thirty foot slab?
Sixteen by thirty slab. Would we have asked for stormwater?
Five thousand square feet.
Five thousand square feet, so that's, somebody do some math for me.
I wonder if it would move three foot over, did it make a difference?
That's what I was thinking. You could have just extended your slab and then he would-
And move the building over.
Be in compliance and get his permit, if he wants to go that, if it's cheaper than doing the drainage.
Yeah, well, I don't, no, I don't think, I think the drainage is gonna be the cheaper, but that's something will be on you to figure out how to move that water.
That would be the thing. We want to satisfy, it's okay you do what you want to on your property, when you start hurting somebody else adjacent to you, then it's a problem.
Yeah, it is. Um, let me do this first. Is anybody else speaking in opposition that wanted to speak tonight? I want sure everybody gets a chance to be heard. Let me, let me go ahead and get the other comments, and then we'll have some additional discussion from the board. Let's hear all the concerns first.
Good evening, uh, good evening. Duane J. Dawn. Um, I'm a, me and my father are property owners on the, on, on the backside of Dale. Uh, we, they've been there probably ten, I don't, ten so years, never had a problem. Uh, great, uh, neighbors. My concern, our concern, my father couldn't be here tonight. Our concern is when you start moving the water around, where it's gonna move on, towards us. And the fact that the building, um, I noticed that the new building was there, but I, it's, you know, that's just in passing. Me coming back and forth by, I noticed that the building was there, and I noticed that it was close to Dale's line, but that's not my, really my concern.
Remind me which, I was looking at my computer, it started updating, I don't know why it did that, so. Which property was yours there?
Is the one with the long white shed in the back?
No, mine's just field on the far right side.
Oh, you're the big field there?
Yeah, I'm the, I'm the, I'm fifty-six acres over here on the far side between the subdivision and the railroad track.
A field, a cornfield or whatever?
See, and if you push the water back, now if you're trying to drain it out to the ditch-
Come around to this side and point to it, because we, we can't, it's opposite for us.
Yeah, okay, I'm over here in this corner. I'm that corner.
Over here?
So, yeah.
On the other side, all those trees?
Yeah.
That's you, okay.
That's me. And I already have water issues from the subdivision, but that's, that's here and there.
Gotcha.
Um, my concern is, I, I don't want to say one way, I don't know this gentleman over here and his family. I mean, if speak, wanna go by, that's it. Um, there's people, there's probably fifteen lots down through there. And I've, over the years, I've met some of them and some's coming, some's gone. There's some buildings, as the wooden building that was there that Mr. Knight put there a couple owners ago of that house, um, I don't know what's gonna happen here tonight, but my concern is, is if some of them other owners, and I don't know what he done, um, but a lot of times you end up, the slab ends up a little higher, the building ends up a little higher. I've done this myself, I got a building back there. So then you end up with, like, the shed, the roof, the water runs off, you've already built the ground up, and then the water runs, and then it, I've got some back there along that line just right on my property line. No problem with the neighbors. No problem at all, really. I got one lady that got a garden halfway across the line. And, you know, I spoke with her, you know, no problem, just, that's fine. I let people put trash over there. Um, long as they spread it out. I just don't want no more water on me.
I think the issue tonight, though, is from what he's telling me from, uh, Development Services, that it's not an issue that he couldn't put a thirty foot slab. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Eric? The question is, is where he put it.
Correct.
So the, the water issue that you may be experiencing from it, he could still have brought that slab on his property somewhere and it wouldn't impact you.
Right.
Well, he's talking about moving the water back towards Ralph Ron Road, correct?
Yeah.
Which would be away from the field.
Right.
Right.
But, but that would not even have been required for your property, for him to put it on his property. We're just looking at to keep the water off of this gentleman's property.
Right, but if you look at the photos of his backyard when it's raining, where that, where that water's at, yeah, all of this here, then that's my property over there. If it's, if that's pushed-
But you're, but you're asking if, if we, if, if a resolution was done with drainage, don't, don't let it go towards your property?
Yeah, don't carry it to the back of Dale's property, go to the road with it.
Gotcha.
If he puts, if he puts a drain on that side of his building, and they ditch it to the front, to the ditch in front of the house, that would not affect you, right?
Right, right. But, and also in the, if other people looking at the building and seeing it close to that line, like it is, what if somebody down through the subdivision decides they gonna replace their old building with a slab? Because there's some that's right on the property line. Let's just say, I'm, you know, and that's a here and there, you know, that-
Make sure they get a permit.
Yeah.
If you see the stakes, then we'll call us.
Yeah, okay. Well, that was just my concern. And plus, they've been great neighbors. The whole time they've been there, never hip each other out, cut a tree off the line, whatever, so.
Sounds good. Anybody else speaking in opposition to this requ, variance request tonight? Alright, I'm gonna see if there's any additional, we're gonna close the public hearing, and we may have some more questions and discussion for you. Uh, comments or questions from the, from the board?
Me personally, I think, you know, we'd give him the option to either fix the drainage issue or just move it over.
Gentlemen, uh, if you can go back a couple of pictures to show the USB that I took in with all the water issues. Uh, first, let me say that on the other building, I had already, uh, had, uh, for twelve hundred dollars, had gutters installed on the other building. When this one got tagged for, uh, by code enforcement, I stopped doing anything to it at all because they were gonna put gutters on that building as well. And we had already planned, because if you look at all these drain issues, this is all, like, the, the bottom picture. May I please, this bottom picture is before the, we, right when we bought the house. That's what been through, the first heavy rain when we bought the house. I, I saw right away that I was gonna have water issues that needed to be taken care of. I've already had estimates, they're kind of ridiculous right now, so my sons and I, my, we've already gone down and looked at drain options. Because we want to tie them in, even at the house in the front yard, to all of our down spots. And move everything down toward the drain to, to, because it's, it's a problem already.
Yeah, all, all that's, all that's really good, Mr. James, I think what I'm coming down, I'll see if the board is on page with this. You've built a building without a building permit too close to the line. If you'd gone through the process, you would have known that, you could have moved it back, and then this drainage issue would not be an issue uh, that you'd have to take care of for your neighbor, because we don't require it, it says, under five thousand square feet. But that wasn't done. So here we are with a neighbor that's got water issues. I think what we might need to do, if, now I'll check, if, if Lee says it's something we could do, table this one to the next meeting so that you could get with our Development Services and see if there's a drainage issue that gives this board comfort that there's been sufficient restitution for the, for not getting a permit. It's gonna be costly probably to, to gutter, dig the ditch, put drains in, whatever it is, make it go, I mean, I don't know what the answer is. But I, I would need, I would need our Development Service to come back and say, I believe this substantially takes care of the drainage issue that's caused by this being so close to the property line. Then we might consider-
The thing I've contributed is that the, the roof line, but the other, the other building had a large roof line as well, and there was a lean-to on it and everything. This-
But, but it didn't have a non-permeable surface. So we're getting into technic, techniques now that I need you to get with Development Services. Is the board okay if we take a motion to table this, so you can get with Development Services, see if they can work out a drainage thing that would help solve the issues that our constituents are having with water on their property? Because if we can't, then, I mean, I'm not, they're not, I'm, they may not do what I ask, but I'm probably gonna recommend that we take a hard stance on this if we can't resolve the water issues, since we should have gotten a permit to start with, okay? But let's try to see if we can find a, something that works for both of you. Is, is that okay?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we need to get our water off of this gentleman.
We need to try before we ask somebody to move a several thousand dollar building. So let's do that. Do you have a motion to table this into the next, uh, meeting?
Next meeting or the next, the, the month from now? How long?
I do it at the next, I do it at the next month.
Might take some time to do, might be squeezed to get it in two weeks.
Is that, is that too quick, in two weeks?
I'll do it in the next month.
Yeah, come to the microphone. Or if you can just tell me thirty, thirty days is enough, we'll make it to, to the next public hearing.
I think thirty days is enough. It's really gonna be up to him, be, whether or not he's gonna get a professional together to do it. Thing about putting it on your next agenda, I gotta have a recommendation to you in two days for next agenda in two weeks. So he won't have time, so.
Do you have a motion to table this and this item for, uh, the twenty-seventh, what?
Seven, seven.
June seventh. Alright. Motion to table to June seventh?
Stepped out on this, Reggie, are you?
Yeah, that's fine. June the seventh, table to June the seventh.
So I have a motion by, Mr. Reggie?
Yeah.
Okay, by Mr. Loper. Got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Burdette to table this to the six twenty-seven. That will be a, another public hearing, so we'll, we'll be able to res, to listen again and then see if there's some satisfaction the board can receive. If not, it may not be a good outcome on that one. So you got thirty days to, all in favor of that motion to table, say aye?
Aye. Nah.
All opposed, no? Hearing none, it is tabled. So you got thirty days to work out something with the drainage that will satisfy this board that we're not gonna harm your neighbor, okay?
Does that mean I have to have the work done, or I?
No, no, a plan.
Plan, a plan.
A plan and a strategy.
If you have a plan for the drainage, you know, it will allow a variance, basically, if it's something that's gonna satisfy.
The variance may not come into effect until it's completed.
Yeah, it's true.
But, but we may, we may allow.
You know, it's cheaper to, to pour five feet of concrete to the side and move the building up, I don't know, I'm not, not a builder, but,
Yeah.
but that would solve it too.
So it may be a more expensive route that you have to go. Okay. Let's try that and see if we can get some resolve and, and work with both of you. Appreciate everyone being here tonight, okay?
Can you take a quick bathroom break, please?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead. If no one else, does anybody else need a quick bathroom break? If not, okay, everybody does?
Yeah.
I'm sorry if you're here for more, give us five more minutes.
Are you hungry?
Yes, very. I had one of those days.
Yes, it was. Or every two weeks is a different one.
That's right, so, eh, that's right, so when you build, once you put a roof on it, or it's, it's built above?
It's, it's a pretty scary. It's not a hump or anything, it's, but I mean, it's just.
No, it's another option, but it solves his problem. I, I did some figures, and so. Bryan County over twenty-five-year period, five hundred million, Bullock County, a hundred and thirty million, Chatham County, eighty-five million, Effingham, thirty-two million. That's equitable.
Uh, you have to probably give it to me? Can you do that, yeah? What do you have, photo? Yeah, I mean, I can, it probably easiest to email it to me, um, uh, you know what the easiest one is? Oh, let me write it down, it's, are you gonna do it, like, right now?
Yeah.
If anyone wanted to see this stuff, I'd like.
I can pull it up, it's no problem.
Do you have an HDMI, a USB? Have you got a laptop or something? I've got a horrible thingy that just needs an HDMI and a USB, and I can connect.
USB?
I was gonna say, this, this has a, a USB-C. Oh, that's got a USB-C?
Mm-hmm.
That's got a USB-C. There, all you have to do is plug it in. This is a wire that's displayed after, so if I plug into an HDMI and then powered by this, then I can connect to this.
Oh, what have you, what have you got, what have you got for a device?
My phone.
Okay.
My phone can connect, this is a, a Microsoft wireless.
Yeah, this, this connects to the, the system up there, but does your phone have a USB-C? Yeah. I never tried loading it on a, directly onto a phone. Uh, we can try it, we'll put it and see if.
What, what is that device called?
It's a click share.
Yeah, so like, like, if you were to plug this into the TV, any TV, any input.
Yeah, we don't have a, we don't have a input.
You don't have an HDMI input anymore?
Not, not available, man, that's.
I wonder if that would work?
We can try it and see. Yeah.
I don't have my little notebook, can't.
All right, we are in our public hearing process, if we can come to order, we're gonna go to item number thirteen. And we've all taken care of business, so we can go the next two hours. Item number thirteen, under, uh, public hearings, the planning board recommends approving application by Bradley Investment as agent for the estate of Robert North to rezone eighty-five-plus acres located at Zitraire Road from R-one to R-six to allow for the future development of a residential subdivision, map three fifty-two parcel seventy-nine in the first district. Ms. Teresa?
Yes, so this parcel is currently zoned R-one, it was rezoned to R-one for residential subdivision in two thousand and six, and no development's ever taken place on it. Here's the zoning for the area. It's close to Highway thirty, as you see, so there is a good bit of residential development in the surrounding area. But at this time, the applicant wishes to rezone it to R-six, which will allow him to, uh, develop it with smaller lots, and you get a higher yield in, 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 in units. The proposal is to create a ninety-seven unit subdivision and rezone it to R-six. So R-six requirement is that the parcel be served by public water and sewer, so as we know, I have it here. This is actually the water and sewer on Highway thirty, um, it'll have to be extended, the lines will have to be extended about nineteen hundred feet to the parcel in question, and the applicant's aware of that, and has done some preliminary, uh, looking at the sewer system to test capacity. Uh, water isn't the issue, sewer capacity is always a question, so, so that, that study is underway, we are looking at that. Just reading here, the rezoning, staff has no, a, a problem with the rezoning, we're recommending approval. I mean, it's currently zoned for residential subdivision, uh, R-six would make it a more dense residential subdivision, and if we look at the concept plan here, it's still incredibly s- l- low density, given the acreage, because the extensive wetlands really makes it a very, it's, it's barely over one unit per acre in, in gross density. So, in fact, it's less than one acre. It's approximately one, one, one unit per acre with gross density, so it's, in some ways, what, you know, could be argued that it is the highest and best use. If it is to be developed, uh, it's still a very low density for the area. There was some opposition at Planning Board, uh, relating to drainage issues because of the extensive wetlands, uh, and the potential for impacts on the wetlands, but also the condition of Zitraire Road. There's a sketch plan along with this, and so it is a two-part, um, request, but the rezoning is necessary in order for the sketch plan, 'cause that is dependent on the R-six zoning.
Okay, thank you, Teresa, we'll open a public hearing, and hear from anyone speaking in favor of this rezoning from R-one to R-six.
Good afternoon, um, I'm Alec Musker with EMC Engineering, um, I'll just add a few points. So we are going from R-one to R-six, uh, for ninety-seven units, uh, the, the density allowed in R-six is four point five units per acre, um, and we are at one point one, uh, gross density, and then if we just take the upland area, uh, we're at one point seven, uh, units per acre. Uh, water and sewer will be extended from Highway thirty, we've investigated the capacity, it seems to be there for water and sewer. This is, uh, based on the new guidelines for the R-six, so we're eighty-five hundred square foot lot minimum. Uh, we're providing fifteen percent common open space. Um, we're showing a playground, grass playfield, park, and a pavilion.
What's your percentage on that? I see that spread around in the.
So it's fifteen point four percent.
Okay.
Including wetlands?
Uh, nah. That, that's just, uh, the playground, the grass ball, the playfield, the park, and the pavilion, that does not include wetlands. So if we're looking at just green space on the project, we're, we're above sixty-three percent, so that, if you included the green space, or the open areas, the wetlands, the ponds, the buffer areas, we're, we're about sixty-three percent of the property is green.
But thi- this meets the current zoning requirements for green space.
Yes, it does.
Fifteen percent.
Yeah.
We did.
Um, so some, some of the questions that came up last time had to do with the road, um, and drainage. Uh, so what we, what we discussed then was, this is the sketch plan, um, you know, the next phase is when we do all the detailed design of the drainage system, um, and figure out exactly what's going on. We're not allowed to stop drainage coming onto the property, that was their primary concern. There was a, a ditch in this area, and then a ditch closer to the middle, kinda where it lines up this wetland. Um, and then the, the guy that lived down here, his property drained in this direction. Um, so the, the concern was we would be stopping up that drainage, damming it up, um, we would, we would provide pipes to pick that up and allow it to continue to drain like it does. Uh, so that whole wetland, that property around that well and drains down, goes through the property, um, it drops off probably five or six feet and kinda loops around back through the old Morgan Pond and back under Highway thirty. Uh, so we would provide stormwater detention, um, and then we would pick up any of that drainage that's coming onto our property and allow it to continue to pass through. Um, that, that's usually a stipulation in y'all's sketch plan approval, is it has to follow the county's drainage ordinance and stormwater plan, a- and that's all part of it. Um, usually a traffic study is also part of that, uh, approval for sketch plan. Um, so we would be looking at the entrances to the subdivision and the entrance, uh, the intersection at Highway thirty and, and Zitraire Road, uh, to see what, you know, if, if that was available to handle the traffic in and out, if there was any right turn lanes or, or whatever may be needed there. Um, from talking with county staff a little bit more, um, I think they're looking at investigating the road and getting it into T-Slotz program to see what kinda improvements can be made, um, to address, I guess, some of the residents' other concerns. So, so that kinda talked about the rezoning and the sketch plan all together, since we're, um, doing it, but would, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Alec, what's the, what's the average lot size?
Uh, so they're all at least eighty-five hundred square feet, uh, what we have drawn is a sixty by one forty-two.
Do we wanna address him now, or do we wanna let the public speak and then address?
I would just close the public, I would wait till after the public.
Okay, 'cause I got.
Anyone else speaking in favor of this rezoning request? Anyone speaking in opposition?
Hello. First, let me preface this by saying, I know you all have a very hard job. My name's Jan Lanning, I wear several hats, I'm the treasurer for the Josh Riddick Foundation, I'm a new school board member for District Two. Um, I'm a mother, grandmother, and we moved here for the schools. But the county now is not what it was when we moved here. And the schools that are in this end of the county were neighborhood schools when they were built. But the thing is, there's more neighborhoods than there are seats in the schools. And I feel like the people, I'm, all four people moving to Effingham, but they're all moving to the south end, and everybody's developing in the south end. And if you look at how many neighborhoods are being developed, you know, within a five-mile radius, there are zero seats at South Middle School right now, open, zero. So when the realtors sell these houses to these families promising them that their district for South Schools, well, technically, they can say that, but that doesn't guarantee that their child's gonna be in a South Effingham School, 'cause there's no seats. So while the subdivision looks great, and I'm sure, you know, the people that are selling it, the people that are developing it have the best intentions, I don't know where these people that are gonna move into the houses are gonna put their children in school. So when the neighborhoods were, when we first moved here twenty-five years ago, you never even heard anything about overcrowding. Well, now we're having to take people who buy four hundred thousand dollar. Well, now we're having to take people who buy four hundred thousand dollar houses so their child can go to this school and say, okay, now you've got to change your school because there's a neighborhood being built closer to the school, and we've got to let those people go to the school. Now, as far as the drainage and the traffic, the traffic's bad already, and Zitraire Road is awful. I don't know if that's tree trunks underneath that road, if anybody's ridden down it recently. And the traffic's just going to get worse. Now, I've heard a word called moratorium. And I don't understand why other counties like ours, who are experiencing growth pains like Bryan County, why they can do things like that, but yet we can't look at them and maybe do those. I know that the answers are there. I don't know what they are. But we're looking to y'all to make the right decisions, which is why I'm against this right now.
Okay, thank you.
May I address Ms. Jan?
Sure.
One thing we do look at is school capacity, Ms. Jan. When we, when the last one that came up that was large in our district, in District Two,
Yeah.
I reached out to Mr. Ford and Dr. Ford and asked him, can we handle this? And he told me yes. So I go based on what the superintendent's telling me when I'm making these decisions. So, you know, they're telling me, hey, we can handle the volume. So that's one of my questions, you know. How do we handle the traffic? They did a great job handling everything in the neighboring area. It's just a fantastic development. You know, it's large, but they went out to the homeowners. You know, we did a lot of due diligence. I did a lot of due diligence before we ever, that ever came to the board because I was concerned about it, just like you are.
Right.
So, you know, I'm reaching out to the school, but I'm getting different answer than what you're telling me now.
I talked to...
So I'm concerned about that.
I talked to him yesterday before I was coming here, and he's in Atlanta, or I'm sure he would have been here too.
Yes, ma'am.
And he said he's willing to do whatever it takes to stop the growth.
I need him to speak up.
Now, may I help you say, I spoke to him in the last two weeks, and I got the same thing, that the size classroom that he needs, and he has the growth plans, and they've got property to meet the school. Because I said, we need to know if you're telling us you can't meet these requirements.
Well...
And I'm telling you, he's told both of us something totally different than what you're telling us tonight.
He's told me the same thing. I've had lunch with him, and he...
Well, I think the question is, when would these houses be ready for occupancy? It may be three years down the road by the time we get through this process, build a house and sell it. And they may, I'm sure the school board has a growth plan, I would hope, just like we're trying to do the same.
What I've been told is the South Effingham High School and South Middle are landlocked. It's not like Effingham County High and Middle where there's land all around it.
I think the elementary is at capacity land-wise too.
Right.
And that's, that was a concern of mine.
And South Elementary is locked because it was a neighborhood school.
We're asking the questions, you know.
And we're not getting the answer that you just gave us tonight.
Exactly.
So you're speaking, and I appreciate what you're saying.
A huge factor.
But we have all spoken with Dr. Ford, asking for their input. Matter of fact, I've asked him to get together with myself and his chairman to plan for the future as we're looking at our land use and where growth needs to be so that we district will not upset the apple cart as much as it does sometimes.
It's important to us too.
Oh, I know it is.
But we can't really answer the school issues tonight since we have made that contact. We've got to look at the other aspects.
Right.
Roads, water, sewer, safety, and all those things that we do control.
Yeah.
And as far as the moratorium, this board is considering one right now. You know, that's a push from District Two, from me. And it may not come down to calling it that. It may be another tool if we can come up with something.
Right.
That way it's more amicable for everybody, or it may be that. That may be the only tool we can use. But we're looking for some on the safety side of things. It's gotten to the point where there is a safety issue in District Two.
Yeah.
So the board right now is taking a strong look, and we've already had a workshop on it. And we're taking that extremely seriously, and we're getting support. And, you know, this board is really trying to help the people. I'm real proud of what we're doing.
And I agree.
Yes, ma'am. But, you know, we've got to look at everything, you know, look at the rights of the homeowner, and it's a delicate balance. But, you know, we've gotten to the point now where there's some areas that are, they're becoming unsafe if they're not already unsafe. So that changes the game a little bit.
Right.
But, you know, we're all, we're working feverishly and spending extra time and, you know, we're meeting with people and trying to get, you know, everybody's input that we possibly can and get all the best ideas that we possibly can so we don't make a snap decision, but we do something that's really going to benefit everybody, keep them safe, and still be able to move forward in the county.
Sure. And like I said, I welcome people as long as we're ready for them.
Right. And that's the whole point, is not to stifle anything, is just to make sure we're ahead of things infrastructure-wise and otherwise, but...
Traffic and...
It's like our chairman just said, you know, we reach out to the school, and that's what we're told, and I'm...
Well, maybe it's time for the school board and the county commissioners to do a retreat.
That would be great. We're...
Make it happen.
Ms. Jan, we'd be on board with that. I would love that. We need to work more together. But, you know, like I said, we're already reaching out because it is a concern whenever anything like this comes up.
All right. Well, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for speaking. I appreciate that.
Anyone else tonight like to speak in opposition to this zoning request? Seeing no one else speaking or coming forth, we'll close the public hearing and let the board raise questions or comments or have discussion among themselves.
I watched the planning board meeting online. I didn't come out here because it was a bunch of people. But anyway, and I talked to Tim. There is complaints about the road, and I'd asked him to try to get some information on what we need to do to correct that because it is a, I mean, it's like a fair ride over there. But anyway, Tim, have you got any input on that?
Yeah, it's a similar situation to how Bunyan Kessler was. We're assuming, based on what's happening to it. It is an asphalt road. It does have areas where the base is not stable. And so it's buckling up in certain pockets. And so particularly towards Highway thirty. My guess is we probably have to do something similar that we did for Bunyan Kessler is address the problem areas because the other areas don't seem to have the shift or the lack of stability. It's some issues with, you know, there's an uneven depth of the ash that's causing that. So this is one of those things where you really have to go in there, rip up those kind of bumps, those trouble areas, put a new base down, dig out the bases there, put a new base down, and then repave it in the problem sections.
Yeah, I think that's something we're going to have to look at because it's progressively getting worse. I'm going to address the county side first, and I'll talk about this specifically. Also, I had calls about people saying that there's already a drainage issue now with the water going under Zitraire because we're not maintaining the drains there. And I think we were going to try to get some grade shot. I don't know if y'all have had a chance to look at that, but...
We did. And I think Eric can, you talked to Clyde about that, right? Yeah, if you could.
Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager. You said grade. We haven't shot grade, but what Clyde has done is gone out there and tried to find these two cross drains that were questioned. And those are going to require to be jetted out and cleaned. And so they're in the process of putting work orders together. They have not got that work complete yet. And then as far as the road patching, again, until we come up with a plan and come up with the funding to do something more comprehensive, as Tim just described, they are going to keep an eye on the road and patch it, pothole patch it the best they can until we get a more long-term solution. But roadside ditch cleaning and jetting those pipes clean is something he's putting a work order together for, and we'll get done in the near future.
The issues with the road. Now, as far as the subdivision itself, all my calls, go back to the picture. All my calls were about the drainage across this property. And these, I guess, roadways, getting back to these, this high parcel with seven lots here, and then this other high piece over here with about five lots. I don't know what, and Alec, I talked to you about this yesterday. How do we ensure that we don't build a dam there, basically? What I don't want is what's happening, say, in Staffordshire or some of these other low-line areas that we, it's approved, it looks great, and then all of a sudden a beaver builds a dam or something happens, and it won't drain. So, I mean, and then how important are these lots back here over those bridges? If you could just leave that as it is? I mean, I know it's fifteen lots, but, and the big, to get this through, that's going to be a question, I think, to whoever's developing or... So anyway, talk about the drainage, please.
Okay, so let me talk about, I guess, some of the road drainage first.
Yeah, going back to those lots, you know, it's like you're going to have to build a bridge and, I guess, have culverts underneath. Or I don't, how are you going to get back to those?
So what we do is, as far as the design, is we'll figure out how much area on this side actually drains through this area. And then we size pipes to handle that flow so it continues going in the direction it's going. So, you know, just looking at it real quickly this afternoon, it may be like two or three twenty-four-inch pipes under that road, and that'll allow this area to continue to drain, drain into here. So it drains here and then goes around and kind of comes back under Highway thirty. It'll be the same thing with the top. We would figure out the drainage area, and we're required to size, you know, those either for the twenty-five-year storm event or the fifty-year storm event, which is like eight or nine inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period.
So what are y'all typically designed for, the twenty-five or the fifty? What's the...
So most, all of the pipes in the subdivision on local roads are the twenty-five-year event.
What's the difference in a fifty-year and a twenty-five-year far as pipe size? Is that a tremendous amount of money?
Not a whole lot. So it's the difference between eight inches of rain in a day and nine inches of rain in a day.
Well, I'm thinking just the cost to the developer. As far as the pipe itself, is it an eighteen-inch pipe going to a twenty-four-inch pipe? I mean, is there a huge difference if we say, if I was to put in my motion, you know, I want it to be set up for fifty-year drainage?
Well, the whole subdivision, yeah. If we looked at just those cross pipes at those two areas, then that's not probably that big of a deal.
How do you get from these lots to those lots in the back, that dark green? Is that a bridge? I think it was a question you hit earlier.
No, so it's just going to be a road with pipes under it.
So it's going to mitigate the wetlands in those areas?
It calls way tight.
Okay.
So the roads in the subdivision are asphalt roads with curb and gutter, sidewalks, streetlights, storm drainage system. So where it crosses over the wetland area, you just have pipes under the road that allows that water to continue going in the direction it goes now.
One of my concerns, if you might be asking...
Go ahead.
The lot size, we're talking a fifth of an acre average, I guess. Is there enough room to park two cars off of the road and off of the sidewalk without...
Yes, yes, sir.
That's a bit of a big thing.
Street parking is, yeah, we're trying to address that.
Trying to...
Yeah, these are...
...address that because a lot of them are so small that either they're in the way of the sidewalk. Kids can't even walk down the sidewalk without getting on the street because the cars are in, literally in the sidewalk area of the driveway.
Yeah, these would have a sidewalk wide enough for two cars and then assume a garage, I'll say.
Or driveway.
Driveway, two cars, not sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So they're, and I meant on the outside as well, not because people store crap in their garage and they park in the driveway.
Yeah. Going back to these parcels off to the side, will there be sidewalks connecting those two?
Yes, sir.
Eric, this stormwater you're talking about, isn't that part of the stormwater management plan that has to be approved?
It is. Yes, sir. So Georgia Soil and Water approves the erosion control plans, which is part of our design plans. The county and then their review engineers, they look at how...
That's the property, what it leaves the property?
All of the storm drainage regulations that the county has and the state has. So all that's approved by the county and then their engineer. So all that stuff is already in your ordinance as far as how we design it and how it's checked.
You can't take away from or add to the wetlands, right? So the pipe will have to be sized to make the flow be pretty much what it is right now.
So what we're going to do, what we'll do is figure out how much flow is coming there, and then you size the pipes to allow that flow to continue going...
To flow the same as it is now.
That's the reason I was asking, but it's oversized to a point for either a twenty-five-year, I guess, possible flood or rain event or a fifty-year. That's the reason I was asking if it's that much more to size it for a fifty-year event because I would rather be oversized than undersized. And that dams up, and then all of a sudden, we've got water backing up on these pipes.
I got you.
Yeah, we're still trying to fix.
Yeah.
So the biggest difference between this, I guess, and, you know, you mentioned Staffordshire. So Staffordshire, you know, it drops about a foot for three miles through the swamp. You know, this drops like seven or eight feet from this point around back to Highway thirty. Also, the old Morgans Pond, I believe it busted in ninety-four, and we had like fourteen inches of rain. I think it's still busted. So it basically runs and goes under Highway thirty.
Commissioner Deloach had a question. Lee, you might help us with, could we actually legally require a larger plating required by the stormwater management plan or statutes?
Yeah, I'm not certain you could do that. It would have to be some sort of... Yeah, I would lean on the side of not being able to do that and go beyond what our ordinance requires. I don't think you'd have grounds to do that.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, I understand what, far as, I understand what you're trying to do, but I just, I just don't know legally if we can get that specific as far as pipes.
So the other thing, you know, like we're talking about twenty-five-year storm events for eight inches of rain in a day. So, you know, the roads along, you know...
It doesn't have to happen but one time.
You know, the roads along Zitraire Road, I mean, the pipes on Zitraire Road, you know, that, the... I'm sure the way they were put in was, you know, the road washed out, so they put in a pipe. And then when it washed out, they put in two pipes. And, you know, that's kind of the system. It probably is for the one-year storm or something like that.
I got a totally different question. May I...
Yes, sir.
When do you see this project being built?
So probably, you know, if we move forward just as fast as we could after tonight, it's probably, you know, a year down the road before you've got people, you know, getting, turning dirt and moving into subdivisions. And then typically what they do is they, you know, develop it in or sell it in sections. So it may be thirty lots a year or something. So I would say it could be from like one to three years before it's built out or one to six years.
One year to start building, you were saying, right?
Probably so.
And then, because...
And that would be at the fastest rate, I guess, everything.
Yeah, and who really knows right now? I mean, this...
Well, I say that because, just because if they were to rezone this tonight, we are still trying to expand. I heard you say you checked we had capacity. Well, maybe today for this, but we have a lot of people requesting. We have to be careful in our zoning, but we're saying to you that it may be two years before we have the flow capacity to handle the sewer on this. And I don't want to mislead you in going into this and spending the money because you got it zoned for R six. That'd be our intention is to provide that capacity, but it may take us a little time to provide it.
And, you know, that's something we've been asking for on this and other projects is, you know, what is the capacity of the systems? Where are the systems? What are the pipe sizes? You know, what is all this information? And, you know, most of it's put back on us to determine, you know, where it is and what it is.
We're doing modeling now, so hopefully in the next, Eric might answer that, we're going to know in the next few months exactly what we have, where permits outstanding and so forth. So I just caution you there that I don't want to mislead you that if the zoning is approved tonight that we definitely going to have enough for ninety-seven lots here, four hundred over here, two hundred over there without the expansion that we are planning and working on now to try to complete in the next two to three years, you know, so...
Right.
There's not water and sewer in front of this. It's that Highway thirty, correct?
They're talking about, they're going to come get...
The developer, who funds that?
So there's a sixteen-inch water main. It would be extended about nineteen hundred feet to the development. I'm assuming the developer would pay for that. And a pump station would be put in and a forced main installed back out to Highway thirty. So all that would be installed by the developer and dedicated to the county.
So it's a good bit of construction they've got to do, even to be able to get the sewer to the project. So I can't imagine a year... So, I, I can't imagine a year, be any houses being sold.
Well, most, back to what I was saying, my calls weren't so much against it as much as dealing with flooding issues, so as long as that's addressed, I mean, I'm, I'm fine. I just, and also, I, I think actually it's a sketch plan, so, um, when you start, the sketch plan and the final plan.
That's right. So, sketch plan is just, gives an opportunity to the developer. So, you rezone the property and you say, okay, it's, it's suitable for this use. So, then the sketch plan comes forward and it says, okay, you know, we've looked at wetlands and some of the drainage and some of the water and sewer. Um, we showed the buffers and the lot sizes and the roads and here's the yield what we think we can get. Um, and so then.
Sketch plan, go, go back to sketch plan. Does that come back before us if, if there's changes made?
If there's significant changes, yes. If it's, you know, like if we lose one lot or two lots or something like that, I, I don't believe it does because it's still, you know, we still have the same buffers and the same dens- densities and the same, everything that's approved. Yeah, you know, if we, if we came back and wanted to, you know, put fifty more lots or something, then I think that would be a, a trigger to come back before the board. Um, but yeah, it's, it's a, uh, you know, the next step in the process is when we do all of the surveying, all of the design work, all of the reports, all the calculations. Um, and you know, that's where we figure out, okay, we need to bring in Phil and size pipes for this and, and do that. So, that's when we kinda look at, you know, those little areas with, that we're crossing to get five lots. You know, with the way things cost, maybe that's not economically feasible and the developer can't make money doing that, so, uh, you know, it, it may change.
So, after the night, if we approve this sketch plan, it's gonna be a staff level of approval going forward?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah.
That's something big.
And that, and that's how every one of them.
You gotta come back up with them, but if you go add lots and you do the drainage that this is.
I'm just trying to hit every point that I heard on my phone call.
My question, I know we had, does that, or it's conceptually ninety-seven lots now. And I don't know if y'all have looked, if it were to remain R one, which is what it is now, what would, how many lots would that produce on this?
It's, it's probably half that.
I'm trying to get a net number of really what we're looking at.
It's probably half, half that.
Okay.
Is there any off-street parking outside of the, the, the lots themselves?
Um, I think we did show.
Was this the one I read where there was twenty lots where the, uh, post office or whatever the thing was, is that another?
Yes, sir, let me look, um.
If I read that or not.
I read, one of the things we're looking at tonight.
No, that, that's a different one, but, uh, so we do have, uh, at the male kiosk, some extra parking spaces and then uh, at the pic, pavilion and picnic area, there's extra parking spaces near the open space and the grass area.
In there twenty spots? According to that, uh, for the kiosk and the other areas? Somewhere I read there was twenty additional parking places.
Yes, yeah, that's in the staff.
Yes, sir. And then we, then we do have some more by the playground, so it is about twenty, twenty spots.
Staff report, that's why that's, I need to remember reading that, which I, I did like too, additional parking.
That, that's the total of additional parking, so scattered around, but there's, there's twenty additional spots.
That there is some additional parking.
Yeah, overflow for amenities.
Keep it off the street, that is always important.
I'm good, that's all I have.
All right. We've had a good discussion, is, is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve with the planning board and staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Locra to approve staff and planning board recommendations, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it is, as resounding is approved. Second reading, this number fourteen, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Bradley Investments as agent for the estate of Robert North to rezone eighty-five plus or minus acres located on Zitra Road from R one to R six to allow for the future development of the residential subdivision, map number three fifty-two, parcel number seventy-nine in the first district. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette to approve the second reading, all in favor say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Go to the sketch plan, uh, the planning board recommends approving the application by Bradley Investment as agent for the estate of Robert North for a sketch plan for North Track subdivision, a single-family residential development located on Zitra Road, R one that has just been rezoned to R six. This is map number three fifty-two, parcel number seventy-nine in the first district. We've had a discussion, reviewed it, do you need any further discussion or can I have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the sketch plan.
Motion by Mr. uh, Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette to approve, um, the sketch plan as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. All right, we've done down number nineteen, it's a sketch plan. Uh, the planning board recommends approving application by Brett Bennett as agent for Greenland Developers Incorporated for a sketch plan for Goshen Extension Apartments located off of Goshen Commercial Park Drive. A four hundred and eight multi-family development on thirty-four point six acres zoned B two, map number four sixty-five, parcel number two, two A, two B, and two C in the fifth district.
So, these parcel, there's a collection of four parcels, they are currently zoned B two, they've been zoned that way for quite a while and the applicant is proposing a multi-family development and this was in design before and during our moratorium and ordinance revisions, so it was one, it's, it's the first to come through in B two for a multi-family. So, uh, it, it was not originally conceived to, to meet our new requirements because nobody knew what the new requirements would be. So, it's kind of, it's coming in and, and pretty much meeting them. B two, under our new ordinance requires mixed use, but in our, uh, sketch plan pre-application meeting, we did discuss how this is located in an area which, in a broader scale, is mixed use. So, within the development, it is not mixed use, it is purely multi-family residential, but it is surrounded by offices, uh, restaurants, the new Seasons of Japan is just a short walk away. So, it, it's, it's, we were willing to look at it as part of a broader development of, i- area, uh, given that it did come in right at the point where we were revising our ordinance and none of us knew what that would look like in the end. So, these are the four lots, they've, they've been zoned B two. Uh, this is the development plan. And as you see, this also is another development that has quite a bit of wetlands, so the development is concentrated on the east side and then the west side, which borders to the subdivision on, um, uh, Lewis Drive. It, there's quite a natural buffer built in there. At the planning board, there was not so much opposition but concern by the residents of Lewis Drive that there could be eventually a cut through road to Azalia and we, they were sure that that couldn't happen partly because the, the density is built into the acreage and, and so you can't add a road and add more density. Uh, and there's no proposal to cross that, that, that open area and connect to Lewis Drive and Azalia. And that's not, that, that's, you know, this is the sketch plan, this is what's being considered tonight, so there's no proposal for future development to encroach on that single-family residential neighborhood. So, I think those fears were put part, mostly to rest that night at the planning board. But that, that was a concern that was raised and I believe that was really the only concern that was raised at planning board. So, staff, uh, are, have worked with the applicant and are recommending approval.
Okay. Any questions or discussion for the board? Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Huh?
Yeah.
Well, once again, I.
Yeah, I was, I was reading something. Um, now I make a, uh, motion to approve the sketch plan as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the sketch plans as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
I would like a comment, if we're gonna put density, this is the kinda places where you put density. You put it close to the city, you put it close to your city centers, you put it close to them main highways. But this is where density goes, not in our rural areas beside neighborhoods.
Well, the zoning was already there.
The zoning was there and it was a no-brainer, but I think if you're gonna do something and we, there is a need for some multi-family and not everybody can go out and buy a four-bedroom, you know, three hundred thousand dollar home. And we just don't have enough homes here, but you know, if you gotta put it somewhere, this is one place to put it.
Three hundred thousand, they not get you four bedrooms anymore.
Yes, true, it's true. I mean, it's, we're in that kinda market, but, uh.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Are we gonna go to item number twenty? It's a public hearing, the planning board recommends approving the application by K and M Effingham Properties LLC for variance from section three point four buffers to reduce required vegetative, vegetative buffers for an industrial property located at twelve oh four Mill Pond Road, map number four four six, parcel number seven C in the fifth district.
Okay.
That's not right.
So, this one, uh, where the star is located, this is a parcel, seven acre parcel on Ebenezer Road that was rezoned to industrial in two thousand, in twenty twenty. And at the time, I'm not entirely sure why industrial was chosen over B three, that's something that came up during our sketch plan pre-application meeting with the applicant. Because based on the, the general description, uh, we thought, well, this might've worked in B three. But I think at the time, there was concern about, you know, possible future uses that could've fallen more into industrial. So, the, the issue for the applicant is that seven acres really isn't large enough to accommodate industrial buffers. Uh, because if it's, because this parcel is, is, has R one zoning on two sides, three hundred foot buffers are required in those sides. And this sketch plan shows you, um, what three hundred foot buffers would leave. It's just this sort of rectangle in the corner on Ebenezer and Mill Pond Road, that's all that would be left if the three hundred foot buffers were in place. But the variance, staff came out against the variance simply because reducing a buffer to that extent just really sets a precedent that we were really unwilling to work with. But the question is though, is this an industrial use? And so, given that it is currently zoned industrial and that these buffers, you know, are set for a reason, um, we're recommending denial. Planning board came out and recommended approval, uh, but that was with the understanding that the buffer would remain at the rear of the property but could be reduced on the side of the property. And here is the, let me see, this is the revision that they submitted in response to that. So, you see at the rear, this compromise is maintaining the three hundred foot buffer here at the rear, but reducing the side buffer to the requested, I think it's twenty-five feet on the side, because there's a sixty foot strip of land there. It, it's just an oddly configured collection of parcels. This is, this is actually what it looks like. There's a sixty foot wide strip here, it's zoned R one and this is what's causing really the, the issue on the side. And here's the zoning for the, for the parcel. Had, had this strip not been there, industrial next to AR one would, would require only a hundred and fifty foot buffer. So, it's, it's really, it's a, a victim of, of the zoning of the surrounding property. But that's the variance and, and then with it, of course, comes the sketch plan. The planning board did come out and recommend approval on both of these because they felt that by compromising and reducing the buffer on the side along this strip of land, which is only ever probably going to be a driveway, um, they felt that that was an appropriate compromise. But maintaining the buffer at the rear of the property would, would preserve the integrity of the parcels behind which are still zoned R one. So, they added a condition, um, for, and, and it's on the staff report, that the required vegetative buffer is reduced from three hundred to twenty-five along the eastern property boundary only. Uh, and that, that's the sketch plan.
Put your ear in, show me where you're talking about.
Yeah. So, this was the revised sketch plan that was submitted, so along here with that strip of land, that, that's essentially a, going to be a driveway probably. Uh, the buffer can be reduced to twenty-five feet here, so it'll be a twenty-five foot vegetative buffer, uh.
But the parcels to the right of that is R one.
This is, this strip is R one, there, there can.
How about the next parcel over?
This is AR one.
AR one, and, and it, it should be a hundred and fifty foot from that line.
Yeah, had, had this strip not been zoned R one.
I got that, but why would you make it, uh, sixty plus twenty-five is eighty-five, why would you not wanna be one fifty from the AR one?
That was the planning board recommendation, staff are recommending denial. They, they tried to find a, a middle ground that, that could accommodate the applicant as well as the fact that there was no opposition from neighboring property owners.
Seeing me, you'd have to, I, I get taking that sixty foot lane out and say, like, what would it be now? So, you don't hurt the AR one folks.
Yeah.
Seems like it'll be one fifty, not eighty-five.
Instead of twenty-five, maybe whatever.
Or, or sixty plus whatever is a hundred and twenty to get you to one eighty-five, whatever.
There's a lot of difference between three hundred feet and twenty-five.
Yeah, and, and I could go with one, since, since if it was, that little strip wasn't there, I could go with the total of one hundred and fifty feet from the AR property. So, you take the sixty plus another one twenty-five, yeah, reduce it to one twenty-five instead of three hundred I'm getting at.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that would be reasonable to me. But I don't know, we need to go out, go out beside that, beyond that.
And just to point out, so this is the, if, if the three hundred foot buffer were maintained, essentially the development couldn't happen. And even half of that, half of the development couldn't happen, so it's about making the lot developable. But it is a small lot and industrial zoning comes with, with a buffer cost and that is, that's the issue here.
That's part of the deal.
Yeah, we can't, we can't resolve that for him, but.
I've visited the site with, with.
Yeah.
But Phil out there and it's, the, the land behind that piece, the intentions are to go commercial. And the one on the other side probably will go commercial too, it's a big acreage piece.
That blue, blue piece, commercial.
The one behind it, yeah, the blue, no, the one directly behind it is right in the still, is an.
The flag, flag lot, I guess you'd call it.
Yeah, the one that's got the, the, I believe, if you wanna have him come up, he granted him an easement so he could get to his property, if I'm correct with that. Yeah, can we get the story?
Sure.
Yeah, Mike.
All right, we'll open the public hearing, let you.
Boots on the ground to, to see what this thing really look like.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Linda Sims and I'm with Coleman Company and I've been working with, uh, Mr. Edwards on presenting this to you all. Um, when the, the original property was subdivided, it created that flag lot and created that sixty foot access back to Ferguson. Um, so what we're asking at this point is to reduce that buffer because nothing is really gonna be built on that sixty feet except maybe a driveway. So, um, we would, and the intention of the adjacent property owner, although he has not yet filed, is to turn that either into a, a commercial or an industrial designation, so.
To the right of that flag? Or to the?
No, the flag itself, the flag itself that is now in blue and color. He, that's what his long-term plans are. I know he has not filed for it yet, so I know we can't really consider that, but that is the long-term plans. So, us agreeing to leaving the three hundred foot buffer to the south to buffer his property until the time in which he rezones and then that buffer would go away for us. So, we would be able to develop the rest of the property if needed. But we're still encumbered with the other three hundred feet, as Teresa showed you on the first diagram with the big red lines. So, what we'd like to do is have that buffer reduced to a reasonable size so that we can develop the frontage of the property in its best use at this time. Uh, from my understanding, that Mill Pond is not a road that would be conducive right now to any um, traffic of a commercial.
But that, that's one of the reasons, I think, why that, that's a flag lot.
That is correct.
His intention is to get commercially to Ebenezer instead of using, otherwise if it's gonna be residential, he doesn't even need that access, he could just go to Mill Pond.
Yeah, I, I get that, I'm just saying that you could always create these little flag things to get around the AR one requirement of a home.
True, true, but then, uh, one, one, one thing I told Mr. Edwards, I could reach out to that homeowner next door and I, I don't know what the result of that is, but.
Yes, sir, I'm Eric Edwards and I, I did, at, uh, advice from the, uh, some council members, I reached out to the homeowner to the left, shared with them what the intentions are, as well as Mr. James Daniel, who owns the property behind us in blue. And after we share with them what the intentions are, as she shared with me, as her mom's in a nursing home, when she finally takes over that property, her intentions are to also turn that into commercial. She did not have an issue with us, even though we said we would put between the property line of her and that sixty foot buffer that's there that leads back to the property behind me, we would also put, uh, some type of vegetation that would be up there at the same time as a buffer while there's a house there. we would also put, uh, some type of vegetation that would be up there at the same time as a buffer while there's a house there. But, the thing was, is if the gentleman didn't get that line that was right there, sir, he'd have no means to ever turn that into commercial, except coming directly through the property.
I, I get that. I just don't know that that negates the requirement for the distance from the AR1 property to the industrial property in my mind.
Yes, sir.
Now, you saying the AR1 property has no objection to it. Are they here tonight to share they have no objection, or...
Well, they're, no, sir, they're, I have, I have no idea if they're here. They spoke to us and said they would not be coming to, uh, that, they had no issues with it. They would not be coming to file any type of complaint here.
Who are you talking about? The, the...
AR1 property there?
Oh, the AR, yeah, and I spoke to her too.
Yes, sir.
Spoke with her?
Oh, yeah, it just so happens, her grandchild and my son played a little ball together. And I didn't realize it. No, she agreed.
She has no problem with the variance?
Well, she does it, but, uh, and it's, it's part, and I want to try to figure this out. Um, you obviously, you explained what you were going to be doing, she hadn't. I think the, the concern is, and I don't think she understood that with the zoning of light industrial, what could possibly be there. I think we can crack that note, we just got to figure it out.
Yes, sir.
Uh, because she didn't, technically, there's a lot of manufacturing that could be there without that buffer. Your use is fine. In fact, I think your use is really a B3, honestly.
Can I, can I say something? Yes, sir, the reason, and maybe, maybe it was zoned incorrectly, really doesn't matter to me. It's, it's a door company we have, it's an overhead door company, but also have a small aviation repair company. It's nothing but where I work on, I work on detailed parts that come off of aircraft. The, the thing was, at a later date, we would like to have us a paint booth behind my shop. And that's where that came up about that for future use.
That does change, okay.
And that was it. It was nothing that was major. It was, I would just need to support the items. These are items, uh, that, uh, wheels, things like that, small landing gear parts. No manufacturing, I mean, nothing like that.
I, I'm just cautioning the board about, without some reason to reduce the, the buffer that's required pre-AR1 and industrial.
What is it for B3? What, if it was a B3, what would be the requirement?
25, right.
If it was B3, I would give you that.
Oh, 30 feet, that's right, AR1, 30 feet.
Me, that flag does not qualify.
30 feet?
Me, that flag does not qualify.
No, but I mean, if it was a B3, it'd be, I mean, it'd have to be 30 feet from AR1.
But it's not, it's industrial.
It's not, but what I'm getting at, and what...
That's kind of what I...
Well, what he's...
I'm trying to avoid this precedence of our board setting, and I'm trying to crack the saying, we, we got to figure it out, to the best.
His concern, my concern, you know, would be keeping this I1 and reducing the buffers and somebody else come along by, whatever, and then do something different.
And we'd have a 25-foot buffer.
Right. If we could go B3 with it, that would take care of that. Because the industrial use would go away. We could do some kind of conditional for what he's doing. Would that fit the bill a little better and give the people around him protection until they do figure out what they're going to do?
They have to reapply.
And have to start all over.
Start all over, to go B3, right? Couldn't, you can't do that tonight. You can't have a public hearing. So, you have to make the application. But they're suggesting you might could, you could get those buffers. It seems like there's no one objecting to it tonight, but I'm hesitant about changing the buffer from AR to the industrial. I think sets a precedent. But if you went with B3...
It would take care of it.
Then you've got the, uh, 30-foot...
Would he need a variance in?
Huh?
Would he even need a variance in?
He goes 30 foot from the blue line, he wouldn't...
I, I, I think the issue is the secondary use. Um, uh, and it's not the use as the overhead door company that, that clearly falls in the B3. Um, what had come up was where we tried to fit the aeronautical, um, uh, parts repair and so on and so forth. Um, the only place we could fit that, um...
Is an I.
It's a conditional use in B3. Automotive, uh, paint and body shops. I know it's not automotive, but a paint booth is a paint booth, right?
That would be a close fit. Could you do a conditional and fit that in there?
You wouldn't have to have that big buffer.
Well, no, you wouldn't have to, if it was B3.
Yeah, this would be a moot point.
But not as much.
He'd be able to use his land like he needs to, and we'd be protected from the industrial aspect of that in the future in case something changed with him.
If I can support both my businesses as needed with that and minimize that, that's, that's all I'm looking for. This is not, this is not something I'm putting together to, to put it together and to sell it. This is something to roll down to my family and that's why I'm doing this.
And, and, and when we say that, I trust that, but I...
I understand.
I trust you, but I'm going to give you a prime example of where this got us. Um, we had a parcel zoned industrial right there near the intersection of Ebenezer and 21. There was going to be a tractor dealership, it was zoned I1, it was all great. And what is it now?
Yes, sir, you're right.
A chain link yard for people to store stuff.
Yes, sir.
So, that's, that's why we have to be very, we have to consider what it could be.
That's why I wouldn't change the buffer.
And I know you're, I mean, I, I know you well enough now, I'm not at all concerned.
Yeah, I know your intentions are good, and that's why I'm, I'm, I'm speaking for it tonight. But it may be in a different way. Another concern that we have, or that I have, is the parcel behind you. If we, that remains I1, we do a buffer there, well, it's to keep the guy from behind you from doing the same thing, and he's getting closer and closer to residential in the back. If it goes a different way, and it's B3, it changes that quite a bit.
Industrial land is, is very valuable, and if we give that buffer, somebody's going to offer you some big bucks to have that nice industrial tract with these small buffers. And I don't know how you're going to say no when they offer you a lot of money for that. And, and we want to keep industrial in industrial areas. I, I hope the board will not give less than 100, was it 65 feet? From the, from the, for AR to this property, unless it's rezoned B3.
B3, he can get what he wants.
I think so.
Well, I don't know. I mean, there, there's a question about whether he can do his aeronautical. What, what is that you do on the other side?
Uh, it's, it's aviation repairs, parts, yes, sir, detail parts.
If you can verify through staff that that's a business that could be done in B3, then I would say start the application for B3 so you can get the full use of this property that you want.
Yes, sir, that's fine with me, yes, sir.
And then if the guy behind you goes B3...
No, 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 I'm thinking... I think, I think it's great. At some point, and what I have staring me down, I know there are residential neighborhoods further down Ebenezer. At some point, this is going to clash, and I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to start stepping down kind of before we get there. And I think your use is a perfect use in that transition.
As a B3.
I do, I do, yeah.
So, um, I think I need to entertain a motion to deny this request for a variance. And the only way to get the use that you're looking for is to go, if it gets, if it gets denied after I ask for that motion, is to go back through zoning for a B3. Because I hear the board saying...
We support that.
They, they may find the support for that B3.
Okay.
Since there's no opposi- opposition tonight to the I1, we just want to create a, create a precedence. If there's no opposi- opposition to the reduction in border for an I1, surely there wouldn't be for a B3.
Right.
So, you should have a pretty smooth path, okay?
You have to go back, back through the planning board?
Go back through the planning board and zone it.
Is there an expedi- expeditious process or not?
There's really not because of advertising. We are in a cycle now where we, if we get your application next week or so, it gets on the June planning board agenda and whatever July meeting if we...
If I can hear it, July?
Your meeting in July, which may be the second me, the second meeting night in July, if, if you were to cancel your July 5th meeting, if that's a thing.
I don't know that we'll cancel that. I mean, we got a lot going on, we'll have to talk about that one, but it, but...
We're going to have to have that meeting.
Yeah, we got, we got lots going on.
Okay, so the July 5th meeting?
Yeah, so...
Is that a huge problem, or?
Well, I'm just, I'm just chomping at the bit. I've been on this for two years and I appreciate everything, and I'm going to do whatever you need me to do. And it's...
Is there anything you can do in the meantime to...
I mean, Roger knows, I've been talking to him, trying to figure out a way to...
Yeah, just...
Do this without creating some crazy reduce...
In fact, the, the property, when we went out there, was, the, the other one was there.
And I wouldn't fully understand, at the time, I didn't, you know, um, understand exactly what, but I didn't have a plan.
Get ready to do this business, so you got to build buildings and all, you got to go and design and so forth.
I have them on site. I'm, I, I bought my buildings, they're, they're sitting there, I'm, I'm paying on them, I'm, I'm wanting to clear the land. I've finished doing the rest of it, and, uh, I'm just at the mercy of, of getting the permission.
Fortunately, I, I think I need to ask for a motion to deny this variance, we don't set a precedent, but start there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would probably give him the option to withdraw his application for a variance.
What does that do for us?
Well, I wouldn't want him to be penalized in any form or fashion by getting it denied and triggering another wait. Um, I know that's dealing with rezonings, there's a six-month wait. I'm not really sure about the variance, so, I would at least give him the option.
I got you. It, it, it could trigger a six-month wait, I got you. So, I'm going to give you the option, if you want to withdraw this request tonight. That way you can go right back to the, and seek the B3 rezoning. Our attorney's advising that if you don't withdraw it and we deny it, it's actually a si- could be a six-month requirement before you can bring a rezoning request back.
Okay, yes, sir.
Would you like to withdraw this request tonight?
Yes, sir, I do, thank you.
So, I know that our constituent has withdrawn this request, and then you can immediately go to zoning and try to get for that B3 and see if we can get that.
And if we don't have a conditional use for, if we have, have to consider a text amendment to our conditional uses...
Then we'll do that.
Something more...
We'll try to make this happen.
In line, I mean, very similar to the automotive.
What we'll do is we'll reach out and get a better idea of exactly what he's, what he's doing, I think. Um, and then we'll figure out, uh, how it fits and where, um, and work it from there.
All right.
It's, it's, it's...
Please note for the...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a paint and body shop, but instead of cars, it's airplane parts.
That is correct, sir.
It's probably less intrusive than a paint and body shop.
I would say so.
Yes, sir, it will be.
Probably better because you have a bunch of wrecked cars parked out.
Absolutely, exactly.
Sorry for the inconvenience, but, um...
I wish I would have thought of this and worked, but it...
That's a good idea.
It's okay, we'll, we'll work through it. But, uh, let the record show that the applicant's withdrawn the request for item number 20, so number 21 goes away, and that he's going to reapply for the B3, and we'll see if we can't help you get that done. With whatever text amendments we need to help you get that resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you much.
Appreciate it.
So, it's actually the remainder of your items, 20, 21, and 22.
22 was the sketch plan, so that takes care of that one as well. All right, very good. All right, um, before we go, uh, make requests for executive session, why don't we, so our staff won't not have to stay, see if there's any reports from any of our staff?
We, we do have one, um, with regards, uh, it's a discussion point, um, regarding our fund balance. Uh, and just a, um, uh, it's not a vote on it, just on, we wanted to get feedback on combining our fund balances and creating a minimum fund balance policy versus having a separate fund balance for rainy day and then no minimum fund balance policy for the unassigned balance. It, 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 it makes it a little bit easier to manage, uh, and it also looks better on our balance sheet, um, for rating agencies and that sort of thing. Because, um, even though it's an, it's a part of our fund balance, it is considered restricted and therefore it cannot, uh, be used as our fund balance percentage. Um, Mark will kind of give you a little bit of details on it.
Have you got something to show us? Because I'm not really following.
Okay.
Oh, yes, sir, I got a few handouts. You have one? Glad I brought my glasses, this is...
You're right.
I'm, uh, Mark Barnes, the finance director. Uh, in front of you is the balance sheet from the audited financial statements that were just presented at the last meeting. And what the county manager is talking about is the highlighted item down there called the economic stabilization is $6 million worth of the general fund, fund balance. That is, because that was set aside as a rainy day fund by, uh, an official board action, it has to be shown separately from the unassigned fund balance. And, uh, what he is talking about is if instead of having a formal board action that sets that aside, if we had it just in our financial policies that had something like, that would say, for instance, we maintain a 25% fund balance, 25% of our annual, uh, general fund expenditures worth of savings in there.
I follow you now.
Right, yeah, that would...
It'll be a paper shuffle just for our rating agencies when we go through that process, basically.
Co- correct.
Exactly.
Uh, and then there's also another benefit, but I'll let Mark finish.
Oh, oh, by all means, go ahead.
Okay, I, I was going to say, um, one of the things I would want to try and do if, if, because this is kind of a two-step. The first step is combining the balance, and then the second step, it's actually a three-step. And the second step is creating a minimum fund balance policy where, uh, the board, uh, creates a minimum percentage of, let's say, the previous year's expenditures that has to be retained in fund balance. Um, and if it were, um, you, you know, I could, I think you said Bullock has like a 25%. The Government Financial Officers Association recommends a minimum of two months or 16.6%. Um, I think 25% is really the minimum we should have. Um, I think between 25 and 30 is probably a good, healthy number, uh, for a minimum fund balance policy. Uh, and then, um, the third step on that is, uh, basically, uh, doing an automatic determination of what happens when the funds go above that. So, let's say we have a minimum fund balance of 25%. Um, and anything above that, we can roll over into capital, um, uh, so that it automatically gives us additional funds on an annual basis to manage projects like roads, uh, and that sort, and that sort of thing. Uh, rather than constantly build, we can budget for it, and rather than constantly building up our, our, our fund balance and then having to come up with an individual use.
Well, I think that's the control that we want, um...
But then, you know, do away with our rainy day fund.
But we're going to have, we're, we're going to have a minimum, which is going to be higher than the, than daily day, uh, than the rainy day fund.
But this you, you can't touch until...
That's right. Well, it's...
But you don't fix it where you can use the money, like you want to for this.
No, sir, no, sir. What we're saying is, we want to do it through a policy. In other words, if they violate the policy and use, say, 25% of a, a $30 million expenditure budget would be, uh, what, what would that be? I don't know.
Uh, eight per, eight million?
Eight million dollars. So, our, our rainy day fund would go as a policy to eight million dollars. If they spend the fund balance down below that number without our permission, they would be in violation of the policy, and that'd be a, an act of discipline. In other words, if they're going to spend, if you have $30 million in your fund balance...
So, that, that the minimum of eight, eight million dollars is going to be there on hand?
That's right.
Yeah, as, as a, as a policy, but not on a balance sheet. So, the 30 million shown here is one fund balance, but our policy will say you got to keep 25, 30%, whatever you want to do. 25% is about eight million. You got to keep that in a rainy day fund for special emergency situations. But even the other has to be budgeted, so you're budgeting your revenue expenditures, and you say, you know what? And you know, I've talked about this, Mr. Loach, that we don't want to have these monies accumulating our fund balance. We want to get these roads done, this infrastructure done. So, we would like the staff to take that other 18 million that's not assigned, if we're not using it for bonds or whatever, and say, all right, we have these roads, so we have these revenues, these expenditures to do our roads, and we want to add fun, part of that funding from fund balance. Does that make sense? They have to show the fund balance they're going to use for those capital every year at budget time.
And it would have to be, it could only be the fund balance above, that is above that 25%. And the one nice thing about this, rather than having the, the, the fixed amount in the stabilization fund, is as our annual budget grows, um, then that 25% is 25% of a higher number every year. So, that minimum fund balance rises with the size of our budget, rather than staying fixed at that 6 million, uh, which it is right now at the, you see what I'm trying to say?
I do.
Okay.
And one of the reasons stabilization funds were, were instituted, I used to recommend these as an auditor when I did the, they might have started way back, even when I was involved in the audit, was because when you had fund balances, it looked, constituents were very leery of why you had excess fund balance year after year after year. So, we would put in there a stabilization balance that took it out of your unassigned, and your unassigned didn't look so large. But right now, we are in a rapidly growing county that needs to use our excess funds for infrastructure.
We actually talked about this, um, in our capital, or my capital improvements project class, um, on this past Thursday. A lot of other counties are doing the same thing. A lot of other counties are doing the same thing.
I've been big on it from, I've, I've always, if, if the county's got a large sum of taxpayer money, there are two things to do with it. Either put it to use for the citizens and, in roads or something, or roll back the millage and give it back to them. You know, it just don't need to sit there. And that's, so this is a good way to, uh, to be able to use, you know.
To do it by policy.
I mean, we're growing, we need, you know, we need to.
Yeah.
Put it to use.
Do it by policy, so we get the best rates when we do bond for the construction we're gonna need to do, to use these funds. I, I like it.
And I, and I'll say one other nice thing about it is, we can estimate this kind of towards the end of the year, like towards the end of the fiscal year, um, and say, like, let's say we're estimating, we're gonna, going to come in above, um, you know, on operating surplus of three million dollars, right? Um, based on, you know, our spending and, and history and so on and so forth. Um, uh, knowing that, that, knowing what our minimum fund balance policy would be, we can actually move that, um, bring it to the board, move that money into capital prior to the, before the end of the year, and then budget for it, um, during the budget process, rather than waiting for the audit to come out six months later, uh, and then, you know, see what we ha- and have the auditor tell us what we already knew. So it's, it's just, it gives us a lot more flexibility, allows us to start projects a little bit quicker, uh, and while protecting that kind of nest egg that we need, uh, in the, uh, in our fund balance, you know, for cash flow purposes and for protecting, uh, if a, you know, another recession comes in and affects our, uh, digest.
So Tim, what you need from us tonight is permission to get the attorney to work to, to, uh, provide us a policy that we can approve and remove the resolution that set stabilization.
Right, and so, and what we'll do is we'll create that policy, uh, present it to y'all, but we'll, we will, um, implement this into the budget that we per- present to you, uh, when we have our individual meetings, which will be within the next couple of weeks or so.
That'd be great. Everybody okay with them bringing that back to us at the budget time? Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Tim, do you have anything else of staff report that you need to share with us?
No, I'm good. I, I do have a need for executive session, so.
Alright, but we do, we, do we want?
I think we got a gentleman that wants a couple minutes of our time here in the audience.
Did you want me, you want to say something tonight?
Yes.
Come up to the microphone, if you would.
He's been waiting all night.
I didn't realize that.
He's been patient.
I didn't realize that. And, and while he's coming, Lee, did you want to talk to us during the staff time regarding this, uh, property issue we're talking about with the rentals and all, or is that something?
Time we have. Let's go to executive session first.
And then come back? Okay.
I have not.
I just want to make sure we give time to listen to you on that.
Thank you. I'm gonna be really quick. This has to do with the, the school and key camera stuff, stuff that I found. You might want to hear one of these.
Let me, uh, I don't know if it's, I'm, I want to hear what you have to say, but I want to make sure you understand, we have nothing to do with the speak.
I understand, that's the problem.
He does, and we spoke, and I told, uh, uh.
Okay.
Okay, so the first page, um, on this packet, I'll just go through it really quick. If you go to the second page, uh, section B one, "The owner of a motor vehicle shall be liable for a civil monetary penalty to the governing body, body of the law enforcement agency provided in paragraph two." I, I believe that you guys are the governing body.
Law enforcement agency.
What was that?
I thought you said to the.
Okay, so the sheriff is collecting money on the school's own speed cameras. The money should be going here. And that's the issue that I wanted to talk about. That's the law that he, uh, forty fourteen eighteen. And let me just get through it real quick, and it'll all tie back in, and it'll make, it'll make sense to you.
Okay.
So the money's supposed to be going to the governing body, and on the same page on this law, it says seventy-five dollars for the first fine, hundred twenty-five for the second, and a maximum of twenty-five dollars for processing. So we could throw away that first packet now and go to the second packet. So I looked for the definition of governing body, and, um, on this first page, you could see, under agent one, they're distinctly saying that a law enforcement agency or governing body, so they're different. So now we can skip this one and go to the next one. So I found governing body elsewhere in the code. And on the second page, number six, it says governing body means the board of commissioners of a county, or the mayor and city council of a municipality, or other legislative body which governs the county or municipality. So now we can skip this one and go to the revenue reports. And I will take out my thing that you could probably see up there, and we'll just go through the quick revenue reports. Um, the first revenue report, if you notice at the top, it says Effingham County, Georgia, automated, uh, photo enforcement program. The fees that they're charging is a hundred dollars for the first violation and one fifty for the second. So they're including the twenty-five dollar processing fee. And then they're adding another three dollars and ninety cents into that, which is twenty-eight ninety instead of the maximum of twenty-five. So for the first month that I looked at, December, they collected three thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents additional money. And then the second month, two thousand seven hundred, the third, twenty-one hundred, the fourth, uh, at the bottom of this.
I don't have that. Am I missing something?
Um, um, it, it's right here, really. So if you scroll to the next page, whoever's doing it, uh, right here. So the total, go up a little bit more. No, other way. Keep going, a little more, a little more, a little more, right there. So I just add it up where they put these three dollar and ninety cent fees, and it equals eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety cents. Oh, and that shouldn't be there anyway. The maximum fee they're supposed to charge for processing is twenty-five. They're charging twenty-eight ninety. So then if we continue down to the revenue reports, I got a copy of the contract. And if you go to the next, this is my receipt for the contract for the public records request that I got, Effingham County Sheriff's Office. You go to the next one, next page. Automated speed enforcement camera. This agreement is made between this day, uh, Blue Line Solutions and the Effingham County, Georgia, a county in the state of Georgia. In this contract, it mentions the county eighty-four times. It mentions the school board zero times. It mentions the sheriff's department one time. And if you scroll to the last page, not the last page, but, um, page twenty on the things that I handed you, notices to Effingham County, go to Sheriff Jimmy McDuffie. I didn't think he was the county. I thought you guys were the county.
Well.
So everywhere in this contract, it's a county contract.
To me, this is not something that we can do in a board meeting. This is something we need to give to management to look with our attorney.
I understand, but that's why I'm providing it to you. I just wanted you to have the info. There's, there's a legal term ab initio, I think it is. I don't know if I'm saying that right, but void from the start. The sheriff doesn't have any authority to collect any of this money, according to the law. And that's what I'm just kind of concerned about.
I appreciate that. I just can't speak to what the law does in.
Well, the reason why I'm here is because, um, mitigate your damages. If you continue to collect the money on the traffic cameras as it is now, knowing that the contract says the county. I spoke to the sheriff yesterday, and I said, can I get a copy of the signed contract? He said, we don't have one. So there's a lot of stuff that he told me yesterday that I have on record from him, that if you continue to collect the money, if the money does have to go back to the citizens, uh, who's it coming from? Does it come from here, or is it gonna come from the sheriff's department? Because it's being collected unlawfully. You gotta do what you can to mitigate the damages.
Well, I understand what you believe, that it's being.
Okay, and that's why I pointed it out, and that's why I gave it all to you.
If we can take this information and get folks to have better understanding of the legal requirements, what we can and cannot do.
So then, one other quick question. Five on the agenda, the camera system for the sheriff's department. If that money that you appropriated for that can be used somewhere else, the money from this program can only be used for sheriff's or law enforcement purposes. And so far, the sheriff, on the four months that I looked at, received two hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents. And they've collected four hundred and five thousand, so it's a lot of money. That's why I brought this to you.
I mean, I appreciate it.
It's a lot of money going through, and the, the Blue Line Solutions got a hundred and forty-nine thousand already.
Okay.
So.
And have, have you shared this with anybody besides the board, like the management of our county or anything?
Uh, no, I just was looking into it because I was bored and read the law.
May have saved us some money. I just, tonight I can't do anything with it other than take the information you give us.
That's why I'm.
The legal and the management get together with the sheriff.
That's why I'm giving you the info. I just wanted to briefly go over it, and you have all the paperwork, and it just, to me, it looks like it's void from the beginning. And if it's void from the beginning.
I'm just saying you can explain it from the, in detail, and I may still not follow it until I have folks that can look at it.
That's why I made you copies. Ten cents a page. I'll bill you later.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you for your, your concern as a citizen in looking at this, and we will follow up, and.
Sheriff's budget like that and.
Yeah, and, and just check back with us in a, and give us a little time to check that one.
Right, oh, yeah. And, and I, I asked for copies of the checks. They don't have them, like, the public records request I, I did. They're just, they didn't have any of the stuff. Like, I, I'd like a signed copy of the contract. We, we don't have one. We signed it three years ago, sent it to the company, and never got anything back. So. And I also did a public records request with the Department of Transportation to see who pulled the permits, because the cameras are put on county property.
State property, yeah.
Or state property or whatever, but whoever pulled the permits, you know, I, I don't know, I just was looking into it. And I've never gotten one of these tickets.
My wife has.
I'm just saying.
Son has.
I'm not here because I got a ticket. I, I just looked into it, and it, and it looked real.
Well, I know the, uh, the sheriff tells me that traffic has slowed down, and, and the school board, uh, then it says the traffic has slowed down, so it's accomplishing some good things, but if it is done, it needs to be done legally and correct, and I can fix it.
That's what I agree. I totally agree with you.
Alright. Thank you so much.
Didn't seem like it was.
Yeah, well, we'll follow up on this and.
Alright.
Check back with us. Thank you. Alrighty. Alright. Any other staff reports before we go into executive session?
I got one, the whole thing.
Okay.
Um, I noticed on the IDA board, I spoke to Phil about this, uh, the, the ACCG thing the other day. IDA has a representative from each municipality. They have no representative from us.
Yeah, they do.
Who?
You appoint, um.
I know we appoint, but we don't appoint anybody from the board. We appoint the GMDs.
Right.
But each municipality is allowed to appoint their own representative.
Like we do.
Like a city council person.
If that's.
Not like we do.
Same thing.
Well, if it's their choice, I mean, if that's, if that's who they choose to put on, I mean, you can do the same.
I think we need, uh, and that's what I want to do. I think we need somebody.
We got somebody on the board from each district.
No, from us. One of us need to be on that board. Not to do anything inappropriate that's going on. We need that, a communication mouthpiece between us and the IDA, that we're not doing hearsay stuff back and forth, that one of us can be right there each time there's, there's a meeting, and, and speak to that when we're here doing this.
Do the cities now have somebody from each council, or just appointing someone from each city?
Each council.
I thought they were appointing someone.
When I was, when I was with the city of Rinkin, I don't remember having anybody.
Damon Ron is the city councilman, and he's on the board. Damon Ron, for the city of Rinkin.
See where we have a communication issue. I mean, I, I talk to Brent all the time.
Well, I know we talk to him, but to have somebody represented on the board from one of us, I mean, I think that would really tie us together. A whole lot more than us, okay, we meet here, we, we have lunch, we have breakfast, we kind of talk what we did. There's really no collaboration, like we could have if we had somebody on that board.
There is collaboration, it may approve.
There's a lot going on right now with, with the JDA stuff, I mean.
And, and there is, there's some, but like, you know, we, we talked about advertising OmniTrax. We're not gonna do that anymore. It's still there. There's a lot of things we talk about doing that's not getting done. Are we still doing any kind of incentives for warehousing? Are we? Do we have a say in that? Do we have somebody on the board there that's making sure that we're not?
Well, well, I've had conversations with them recently.
Like I said, I'm not, I'm not saying nothing is inappropriate. I'm just saying, after seeing that.
Could a board member appoint themselves?
I, I didn't think so. The bottom laws reads, "The authority shall be composed of eight members. Five members, one from each militia district within Effingham County, shall be appointed by the governing authority of said county. One member shall be a resident of the city of Rinkin, appointed by the governing authority of said city. One member shall be a resident of Springfield, appointed by the governing authority of said city, and same for Rinkin."
So we could do it.
And then the commission, each, each commissioner appoints one board member, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So could a commissioner?
Well, no, not really.
It's not true. It goes by GMD. It doesn't go by district.
The board, the board appoints everybody.
The whole board.
And they appoint one person from it. It's kind of been a, um, uh, lack of a better term, a gentleman's agreement, that everybody kind of has an appointment, but technically they're from militia districts.
Militia.
They're from what district?
Militia, GMDs.
The GMDs. So we don't have a district.
One from each district, though.
No, each GMD, and if you look at a GMD map, it gets very difficult.
What's a GMD?
Georgia militia district. The original, they were probably the original commissioner districts.
Yeah.
At one time.
But ours has changed, so there's not a District Two representative, there's not a District One representative, or not.
The IDA was created by constitutional amendment, right? That's why it can't be changed without a statewide vote on a refer, on a ballot.
But I got about a rigid question. Could this board say, we would like to appoint Mr. Delux to be on the board? He was a commissioner.
Is he a resident of Effingham County?
As long as he's in the right militia, or we, you know.
I'm pouring somebody evidence. I'm gonna convince. I've got somebody on that.
Yeah. But I mean, technically, the board votes and approves, you know, the appointment, but it's.
I just think that it's, it's a good question. I've never thought about it, but when you start thinking about it's a constitutional authority, and they have the ability to go into executive session, there could be conflicts of interest. Um, that, that's like me, you know, when I took this job, my law partner was the attorney for the IDA, and I thought it was a good thing to split at that point, because I didn't want to be sharing the same roof, because there could be a conflict between this board and the IDA. So if they have somebody serving that's a city councilman, that's interesting. I mean, I've never thought about it. Um, I would just think inherently there, there would be a conflict a- at some point, um, even though we get along.
I, I don't want, I mean, what's the concern, Roger?
I was looking into the IDA, and who represents what, how we get a say, so what goes on.
I think he was taking economic development class, right, in Sparta?
We have very little, little say or anything, or any control of what they do. Looking back at what happened with, uh.
But I mean, they're, they're a totally different body. I mean.
And therein lies the problem.
I mean, but what about the school board or city councils? I mean.
I mean, yeah, I think, I think. Development has such a big impact on our, on our districts. Our development has such a big impact on our infrastructure.
That's why we have to choose our appoint, appointments closely.
Yeah, but then, once you choose an appointment, what's, what's next?
Well, I mean, they keep you updated.
Hey, Bob, how's it going? Going good at the IDA? Yeah, it's going great, man. Okay, thanks. We have, you know, I was thinking in term, more terms of communication, having somebody there. Hey, we're looking at doing this in this district. This is happening over here. How will it affect the IDA? How would it affect your job to do a good job and bring in the industry that we're looking for? How will, you know, can we do some small business? Some of the same ideas we have here.
You're not proposing a, a coup.
Why don't we start?
But, but I, but I agree with Lee. There, there are concerns I'd like to know, you know, from the conflict side.
Well, when they go into executive session, they won't let you go in there, so you still don't know.
Well, you would if you were a board member. That's what he's saying.
Exactly.
But, but, but maybe we start here, is, uh, getting with, uh, Brent and the board and see how we can improve communication. It, it may be that they would invite a member of the board to, uh, be in their meetings and even in executive session.
I used to go to all their meetings, but I'd never do any executive session.
But they might be open to that, the new, the new board, the new leadership.
Could they legally be having that?
The chairman can go in, and that'd be their decision.
I, I don't know if they, that's, that's a.
You don't know if they can do it.
Yes, a thin line, right? Because that, that kind of gets, if we invite someone that's not vested in what we're discussing in the executive session, I think we lose the privilege.
Of executive session?
Yeah. I think that would be just a tough decision to make that every time they go into executive session, whether you could be invited or not.
That would agree.
We're not gonna resolve this tonight. We got a lot to do. Appreciate, appreciate the thoughts. Maybe we can put this on an agenda for our workshop to, to discuss how we can better communicate, what's the legal possibilities, and how can we do it so we don't offend our board.
I just thought it was interesting that they have council people on.
And I didn't know they can legally do that. And I'm like, why don't we have a?
Are we talking about the Rinkin councilman?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, that might have been a case where.
Been there already and then became a councilman, but in that case, if it's not allowed.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, even Damon was pre, a previous board member.
Yeah, if there's a conflict for us to do that, it's a conflict for them.
Exactly.
And so they may need to correct that. So we might need to bring that to, uh, to Brent's.
Who's, is the guy representative on the council?
Springfield used to have a, Springfield had a city councilman that served.
Charles Heimlich was on there for a long time.
But I'm pretty sure every one of them has counsel.
Which would be unfair to us if, if they can have a council member on there, but we can't have a board that knows what's going on.
Right.
I don't, I don't have that.
And I'm not throwing tomatoes, believe me, but I just.
That makes sense. Well, I said they have information on the.
Have all these ideas. We got all this talent here. Can we merge it?
I was saying, we'll look into it further.
Yeah. I think so, too. Alright. I think so, too, alright.
I didn't mean to take up too much time, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Just put that as a workshop item, and we can get Lee to give, maybe do some research and give us some advice on how we can improve that. Okay, what else?
That was it, just, I got a bunch more stuff, and I'm not gonna say anything else. I was learning in school, so I learned a lot of cool stuff.
Well, it's 9:30, and we didn't have any for executive session, so-
Okay, just real quick, I think you've kind of answered the question based on the conversation with Teresa earlier. So you all are not interested in canceling the first meeting in July?
I'm totally interested in canceling July, I'm gonna be out of town.
Okay, so our meeting in July is on July 5th.
Yeah.
It's the day after the board.
What day is that?
See, now we got this guy, we're gonna put him back another two weeks. What's another two weeks, right?
My 5th is the day after the force issue.
We have a lot going on, I just-
We just gotta do what we gotta do, right?
Do we wanna reschedule that meeting?
You, you can.
Oh, that's right.
I mean, I know we have a lot we're gonna come up, I don't, I don't know how we get around that meeting.
On years where Cinco de Mayo's-
Well, we don't have to decide that right this minute, but, well, pretty quick.
I wanna bring it to you at the next agenda, for whatever it is you're gonna do with it.
Why don't you put it on the agenda for consideration, and then, between now and then, we can, some things are gonna happen between now and then, we'll know whether we have the ability to do that, okay?
Alright, sounds good, and we have also been informed that the work at McCall Park is starting to wrap up, so we wanted to start looking at dates for the-
Nice trucks driving around, yes.
Um, I was thinking-
Um, did we wanna discuss that rental issue, or no? Can I ask one question? Are we talking about something else?
Can we pass out pizza? Can't we pass out pizza while his mom's-
Let's go ahead in executive session.
Yes.
My question, I'll just catch Eric on the side and ask him, so I can get an answer.
Is it gonna be done by June 2nd?
I'm told it'll be done in three weeks.
Your head?
Three to four weeks.
I got a heavy head.
McCall Park?
Yeah.
Three to four weeks, right?
Yeah, Eric, that's what they said, right? McCall Park?
Three to four weeks, McCall Park.
Three to four weeks on McCall Park?
That's what I heard, yes.
Yes, that's what they said this, this week.
So you're looking at the Friday, last Friday in June?
The first Friday, June 3rd.
I won't be here the first Friday in June.
First Friday in June, which would be the 3rd.
You won't be here that senior district, so the 10th?
I won't be here either. Let's see, the 10th? Um-
June 10th.
I think I will be here June 10th.
I'll be here June 10th.
Alright, well, she for June 10th?
You guys do it?
Okay.
I wanna get out there and grill some hot dogs and-
Alright, have a motion to go into executive session.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach.
Better make it clear, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel property impeding litigation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll propose no, any curious? I had Mr. Deloach as a second, he'd already seconded it, so.